So, at any rate, we'll get through the board business quickly. Um, the, the routine stuff. We have two next meeting dates, December 1st and January 5th. Are there any known conflicts or known impediments to our meeting on those dates?
No.
Lee's shaking her head. Dave, what do you look like?
You're on mute, Dave.
Dave, you're muted.
It looks like Charlie's with us, too.
Dave, how does that look for you?
It looks like my calendar usually looks wide open.
Yes. Okay, Charlie, if you can hear us, how are those two dates, December 1st and January 5th?
Fine.
Okay, Charlie says fine, so we will move ahead with that one. Uh, we have a special permit extension request next up. It's number 811 and 819 Jerusalem Road, the South Shore Hellenic Church. Clark Brewer, uh, the architect, who's been before us a couple of times now, has requested, um, that, uh, the special permit be extended for a year, given, um, I guess fundraising, um, dislocations due to COVID, among other things. Is that correct, Clark?
That's right. Yeah, we, we, uh, we, we need another year extension, but we are, uh, planning to start the site work in the next couple of weeks. Um, uh, and, uh, we're reducing scope, uh, with, uh, construction start for the rest of the building in the springtime.
When you say reducing scope, what do you mean?
Well, um, we're, we're taking the second floor off.
Oh, okay. Um, you've requested a one-year extension, but it's, oh, I, it wasn't clear to me, one year to what? Do you have a, what's the date?
I'm sorry, uh, I, I missed all that.
Okay, what's the date of the one-year extension? When does that, when are you proposing that it expire? Because I did not get, uh, in my paperwork, uh, a specific date, just a request to extend by one year.
Uh, let's see, the 14th of December 2017 was the original decision. So it would be a year from the 14th of December.
Okay, so it'd be December 14th, 2021.
That's right.
Okay. How about the board? Would you like to ask Clark questions, or?
Yeah, the only clarification I was gonna ask, um, obviously, I, I understand the need for the extension. Um, the decision itself had a number of conditions, uh, attached to it, and I just wanted to clarify that with the scope change, the conditions that were part of the, um, special permit, or, you know, that-
Go ahead.
In other words, and that we're still, um, committed to those conditions.
Well, we, we are committed to the conditions, um, but we will review them before, um, we, we do change the design. If we have to come back to the ZBA, uh, to, uh, present the updated plans, um, and any minor changes, uh, to, uh, what was, uh, what was approved in 2017, we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, those are, from the quick glance, um, glad you brought that up, Matt. They mostly look to be kind of operating conditions as opposed to physical structural conditions. Is that correct? I mean, you've got fencing hours of operation, screen, parking, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, um, but if it, um, if it makes, uh, I think it probably makes sense to, we're, we're gonna do a review with, with the building inspector, but, um, I'm happy to come in, uh, once those plans are completed, uh, for, uh, an update to the board before construction gets started.
All right, looks good to me. How about the board then? And other questions or issues, or should we grant the request to go for, uh, one year expiring December 14th, 2021? And in the meantime, when the construction, um, process, uh, starts or is about to start, you'll be back, Clark, with any, to the board, the zoning board, with any, uh, changes or modifications, right?
Yeah, and in an up, update, um, with the, with the updated design.
Okay.
I'm, I'm over the requested extension.
What'd you say, Dave?
Go ahead, Matt.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I do, yeah, I do think that that's important, just, you know, if there's some interpretation of those conditions, uh, obviously, that you do come back. I, I recall there was a fair amount of, um, discussion in regards to the screening, um, you know, a number of neighbors had-
Yeah, the dumpster place.
The only fear was that, you know, the, the interpretation is made in the field for, while the scope was changed, so that this condition's no longer applicable, um, and that we should be part of that conversation, I, I, I feel.
Sure, no problem.
But I do think that if you're taking off a floor of the house, it's more substantial change, and we should, uh, uh, see your revised plans.
Yeah.
Well, you, you, you will have plans before construction commences, correct? I hope.
That's right, yes.
Yeah, so I think a condition that we would have, I would have, and probably all have, is that you appear before us before any above-ground, uh, construction commences. If it's some foundation work, I personally don't too much care about it. But to Charlie's point, if, if we're taking, if you're removing the second floor, we ought to see what impact that's going to have.
Well, it would, it would be less of an impact, but I'm happy to come in anyway.
Yeah, I think it's just good practice.
And, and I, uh, and there's, there's, there's currently no changes to the site work, uh, that was approved by the ZBA. That'll go forward as approved. It's just the building, the building's, um, gonna have the second floor removed.
Okay, well, I'd make a motion to grant the extension of one year.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Uh, this is subject to the condition of coming back, right?
Subject to, to the condition of coming back before construction commences.
Dave McMorris, aye.
Okay, Woody Chitik, aye.
Lee Darcey, aye.
Okay.
Charles Higgins, an aye.
Peter, were you listening, or you're muted? Peter, you're muted.
Matt Watkins, aye.
I'm not, I'm no longer muted. I wasn't listening, so I won't vote.
Okay, well-
I was trying to find the link, and I-
Yeah. I know, I had a part time.
I'm in now.
So it's a vote of five to nothing, uh, in favor of extending the, um, new date, uh, completion date. Okay, so that's been moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clark.
All right, the next, uh, hearing is 31 River Road, a continuation, uh, filed by, uh, Architect Roger Hoyt, on behalf of his clients, Randall and Andrea Steele, who want to construct a new garage, and are looking for a special permit as a, um, this will have to be, uh, explained, um, special permit under 8.7, which is a change to a non-conformity, so who's speaking for?
Gonna, um, promote Adam Brodsky.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and also, um, Roger Hoyt.
Okay.
And, uh, we promoted a couple of others for the next hearing, but they can just enjoy.
Okay, so, Adam, you're representing the Steels. Would you talk to us about, um, how this, uh, how 8.7 applies and, um, what relief you want?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chitik. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm an environmental and land use lawyer with Rowan, Tacho and Morgan in Hangham, and I represent, uh, the Steels, and I'm here to provide gentle support to Roger Hoyt, our architect. Uh, this is a request for a special permit pursuant to Section 308.7 for an addition to an existing workshop garage. The property is located within the Residence B zoning district. The lot, uh, on which the project is located is conforming with more than 2.1 acres, and is located at the end of a private way over a road. There's an existing house on the lot built in the 1930s, which is conforming, and an existing one-car garage and workshop, which is non-conforming in that it encroaches within the 20-foot minimum side yard. At its closest point, the existing one-car garage is 9.2 feet from the side yard. Uh, the Steels are proposing to enlarge and extend the existing building to add a modern two-car garage. Uh, the existing building continue to be used as a workshop and garage, uh, but the purpose of the project is to create a modern two-car garage. The addition is going to be connected via a pergola. The new building is proposed to be located 12 feet at its closest point from the side yard. And importantly, the addition, the new building, um, is located outside of the floodplain. If you review the site plan, you'll note the limits of the FEMA Zone AE. The existing garage is located within the floodplain, um, but the addition is proposed to be located outside of the floodplain. Uh, again, um, we're proposing to enlarge and extend the existing building, and we are not creating a new conformity, but we clearly have additional area within the setback associated with the addition, uh, and that intensification requires a special permit. I know that at the last public hearing, you asked Roger for some additional measurements, and at the conclusion of my presentation, I'll ask Roger to present those figures. And we respectfully suggest that the proposed use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing use. We're essentially going from a, an old-fashioned one-car garage to essentially a two-car modern garage with the existing building to be, again, uh, used as a workshop and also for some garage features. I understand, uh, that either at the last public hearing or, uh, in the interim, we were asked to take a look at a decision, uh, concerning, uh, a garage for 84 Gammon's Road that was issued in 2008, and that was actually a, a decision to deny a special permit. I understand that there were several applications relating to that project, uh, some of which were granted, there were improvements to the house, which were approved. Uh, there was a, a request for a variance for a detached garage, but ultimately, uh, there was a, an application for a special permit, uh, in 2008, which was denied. And I respectfully suggest that the circumstances on Gammon Road are easily distinguishable from the current case. Um, that lot was actually non-conforming. It had approximately 33,000 square feet, when the minimum required was 60,000 square feet. There was actually an existing two-garage, uh, a two-car garage on the property, which was, I believe, called the Carriage House. And again, I'm, I'm just divining this from reading the various decisions. And, and in fact, that Carriage House was a conforming structure. As I mentioned, they originally proposed, uh, a, a detached garage, uh, but that application, uh, was withdrawn, and then proposed to, uh, to add the garage to the existing house, which itself was non-conforming, and had also been altered by another special permit. Uh, the garage that was proposed was actually, uh, closer than the non-conforming house, so it actually exacerbated an existing non-conformity, and that addition was also proposed to be located within the floodplain. Uh, the addition was proposed to be connected by a breezeway, which, uh, concerned the, the board during the public hearing, but ultimately, and I'll speak to this in a moment, um, ultimately, uh, the board denied relief on other grounds, and ultimately was satisfied that the breezeway was not an obstacle, uh, to the project. Um, the proposed garage and breezeway were located almost entirely within that front yard setback. I think approximately 80% of the structure was within the setback. And ultimately, at the end of the day, the board determined that the altered non-conforming house and the proposed non-conforming garage were simply too much, and, uh, would be sub- substantially more detrimental than the existing use to the neighborhood. In, in contrast, in our case, obviously, as I mentioned, we have a conforming lot with a conforming single-family residence. Uh, we have a one-car garage and workshop that candidly doesn't function as a garage for a modern vehicle, and we're proposing to create a new, modern two-car garage, most of which is located outside of the setback. And as I mentioned, uh, this was designed to locate the addition outside of the floodplain. So, uh, we respectfully suggest that this is a modest extension of the existing non-conforming structure that will have no detrimental impact on the neighborhood, which itself contains a number of non-conforming structures located within setbacks. Uh, with respect to the use of the pergola, um, at least based upon, uh, the Gammon's Road decision and my own review of the bylaw, I don't see it as a potential obstacle, but we're happy to speak to that issue more thoroughly. Uh, Section 308.7B speaks to alteration and enlargement of non-conforming buildings. Uh, buildings is the word used in the bylaw. And as you know, the word "building" is defined broadly within the bylaw as, and I'll quote, "any structure or portion thereof, either temporary or permanent, having a roof or other covering, forming a structure for shelter of persons, animals, or property of any kind." And so, in and of itself, we respectfully suggest the pergola is a building as envisioned by the bylaw, and should be viewed as part of the addition, uh, to the existing building. And as I mentioned, at the end of the day, uh, with respect to Gammon's Road, the board had no problem with the breezeway, and said something to the effect that it's not interested in the functionality of the breezeway, provided it is an integral part of the building. And as Roger, I think, explained at the last public hearing, and can explain again, uh, there's no question that the pergola that we're proposing is an integral part of the building. I think clearly it falls within other requirements of 8.7B. Now, if at the end of the day, the board is still concerned with the pergola, we're prepared to discuss eliminating it, and essentially attaching the addition directly to the existing garage. Uh, we don't think that's a good idea for a number of reasons. Uh, one is, uh, purely aesthetic, which is that the pergola actually breaks up the massing between the two buildings. Uh, but we could easily shift the addition, eliminate the pergola, uh, and, and, and connect it to the existing garage. But the other implication of that is that the proposed addition then would also be located within the floodplain. And so it's beneficial actually to, to, I, I was gonna use the word "separate", they're not really separated, they're connected by the pergola, but the massing, uh, would be separated with the, with this proposal. So I, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you've got regarding the bylaw. I do know that Roger is prepared to present the additional information that the board was looking for.
Okay, well, let's, I, I don't know, I'd recommend that if the board has questions of you, since you've just given your, your slice of it, that we, uh, put those on the table, uh, at least at first, and then turn to Roger.
Yes, sir.
Board? Any questions of, uh, Adam, or Lee says no?
None here.
Not at the present time.
Okay. Charlie, am I, or should we?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Adam.
You're very welcome.
So the board likes to hear from Roger Hoyt?
Roger Hoyt, yeah.
Can the board hear me? This is, uh, Randy Steele, the homeowner.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I know that, uh, Roger was trying to connect, he can hear you, but he's having, uh, he was having difficulties connecting. So-
I can see him, I think he just needs to unmute.
Roger, can you, can you hear that and figure out how to unmute? Does it look like he tried to call in? Does he?
Well, he seems to be online to us, uh, just-
Yeah, he said he can hear you, but he's not able to connect audio, you know, the audio.
It looks like he's muted from the, uh-
Right, I think he called before. If he wants to try calling in again, I, I, he's on his iPad, this happened last meeting, um, but if he wants to try and listen via the phone, we could, he could do that again, call in.
Why don't we give that a, a whirl?
You've got a quick shot, Roger, and if you can't do that, I'll try to answer the, any questions the board, um, the board has.
And, and thank you, Mr. Steele. I do have some notes from my conversation with Roger. Also, I might be able to summarize some of the information that the board was looking for.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead, Adam, while Roger's-
That would be good. I don't have that paperwork in front of me, but he, I know he did, um, do some measuring here and, and, uh, some aerial views of, of where the proposed garage was.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Yes, I, I'm actually referring to, uh, Sheet A32. I don't know whether the, the board has this. Um, if necessary, I can find it on my computer, and we can try and share screen. But I believe the board asked for a calculation of the area of the existing structure located within the setback, and then the area of the proposed structure within the setback. I believe, if I have my numbers correctly, that the area of the existing structure within the setback is 140 square feet, and that the area of the proposed structure, and here's where I probably need to grab my reading glasses, I believe it's 114 square feet, as shown on Sheet A32. And, and Roger hopefully will call in and correct me if I'm mistaken, and the other-
The, uh, I, I did speak with Roger-
Can you, can you hear us now? Can you hear us now?
Can hear you.
Yes, yes, we just-
Oh, excellent, we've been trying for the whole time. It's Nancy Hoyt, hold on, here's Roger. I don't know why, we can see you, I don't know why you can't see us. We have tried everything here.
Hello.
Hey there.
Okay, I think I just, uh, I went out in the other room just for a second, but, um, I think I heard the, the question was asked about the new garage, and it's 114 square feet of 504, or 22.6% of the facade is in the, um, uh, behind the, the setback line. Um, the workshop itself is 101 square feet of a total of 336. So it is 30%, um, inside the setback line. And the, uh, other thing was asked is the distance between the Odleson corner of their house and the back left corner of the existing workshop is 176 feet. And the distance over to, um, the other residence that's closest to the house is about 390 feet. And I think you, if you see the, uh, Google Map picture, uh, overhead, uh, you can see the kind of coverage, uh, with the trees. Uh, some of those are deciduous, but most of the ones along the driveway are all evergreen. So they stay basically year-round, uh, in, uh, in full cover.
Woody?
Yeah?
It's Peter. Um, I have a question for Roger.
Uh, I think- Go ahead.
I think he's giving us the, a different facade than the one we asked for. What we were looking for was, if you look at his, um, at the Morse Engineering Plan, that is, the site plan, um, we were looking for the, let's call it the length of the, um, two buildings that are, the one that is and the one that's proposed to be in the setback, not the, just the width, because we're more concerned with the overall area, uh, than-
Massing, perhaps, Peter? You're talking massing?
Yes, I'm talking massing, but I'm also talking, uh, the perspective. Uh, I believe the 114 he's giving us is on the end of the building, rather than on the side of the building, which is the side facade that we are really more interested in. The relationship between how much is currently in the setback, and how much more he's planning on adding. We can't calculate it ourselves, because we don't have the dimensions, I think, for the existing garage. Uh, and once again, I'll take Adam's reading glasses, but, um, I think there's 30 feet, uh, of length on the proposed garage, and then, you know, there'd be a certain amount of facade extending up from that. Uh, I, I think the, the dimension he has given us on the, on the end of the garage, which is where the garage door is, if I have it correct, is, is not really the relevant one. And not what we tried to ask for.
Want to see the facade, uh, from River Road?
Yeah, yeah, I want to see it from, you know, where you would see it if you were the abutter, uh, not the, uh, not somebody entering the garage from the end.
Yeah.
And, and so if I look at A32, I've got, um, a, uh, you know, an end view, um, which necessarily is a much more minimal amount of, uh, area in the, in the, um, in the setback.
Well, I think, and so what you're looking for is that, is the dimension of, uh, the amount of from the, the driveway to the Odleson house, what the, the two, two buildings would, uh, be, which would be inside of the setback area, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not from the end, which isn't facing any abutter. Uh, and, and the end is primarily, you know, the, the entrance end that you've shown us, um, i- is, is not the, uh, side of the, of the property that is, uh, facing the side lot line.
Wouldn't it be simpler just to say, if you were standing on River Road?
Yeah.
Looking at the, at, uh, the existing structure and the proposed, what does that look like? I mean, if you go all the way over to Chris Odleson's house, that's slightly different, um-
Yeah, I, I, no, I think it's, it's the facing River Road facade that we had asked for, not the end on it facing-
Right, right.
The driveway.
Well, I, I misunderstood that, because River Road basically stops, uh, just beyond where the driveway goes in, uh, to, uh, uh, the Steele property. And that's a private driveway that goes down to Odlesons. But I can, I can do that calculation, uh, fairly quickly while, uh, while we're waiting here, um.
Peter, you're on-
I get, uh, the, the part of that structure facing the, the driveway is 480 square feet.
The existing structure or the proposed?
That's the proposed, and I'll, I'll do that now for the, for the existing.
Okay.
You, you said the driveway, Roger. Aren't we looking at the facade as if you were, as though you were on River Road?
Well, what I'm saying is that, that the private driveway to the Odleson property, um, it starts just past where the driveway goes into, uh, Randy and Andrea Steele's property. So, um, that's when you, you said from River, that's why I, I did the, the other elevation. Just one second, and I'll get this for you, um. So it's, uh, 401 square foot of the existing, um, workshop garage that, um, looking at it from the, uh, from the Odleson driveway, uh, that is in the, um, uh, the, the area beyond the setback. And it was 480 square foot of the, of the new, um, proposed garage.
Okay. So it'd be, it'd be basically 120%?
uh, of, of the, of the existing, but the new being 480, which is a 120% larger, greater than the 400-foot?
Yes, yes.
Peter, does that get at what you were?
Yeah, it does. I mean, you know, the whole, the whole thing, we're going to have to talk about what the issues are, but at least we have the math. And I think the, is the 480, um, uh, and 401, do they include the portions of the roof that are within the setbacks, um, setback, Roger?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so it's the roof and the body-
And the sidewalk.
On the, okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What about the board? Questions, the board? Does the board have any questions?
I think some of my questions are going to go back to Gammon's Road, but that's not something we need to bother these-
Right.
-these folks with, and that'll come when we deliberate. I, I, I think we have the information that we asked for with this subsequent set of calculations. Um, you know, it's, it's certainly a lot more than is in the setback now, but it's not a lot considering the area of the lots out there and the distances among the houses. So, uh, we'll just have to take it up.
Mm-hmm. I have one question. Are there any undeveloped lots in the area?
No.
Okay.
Well, the lots, the lots in front of the Steel property, um, uh, are developed, um, and, and the lots to, if you're going, uh, I would say down River Road towards, uh, the river itself, um, you've got basically the, the two lots, uh, that are, that are shown on the site plan. Um, uh, the McConaughey and the Odleson are the ones that are on that side. And then of course, the, on the other side is the Cohasset Conservation Trust, uh, to the, to the south.
And if you've been down here, the, the lot in front of our house, uh, is, has a restriction of no construction on it to preserve this property back here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I'm sure that you have the copy of the Odlesons' letter of support for the, for the project. Uh, and also, uh, I'm not sure if any of you have been, have walked down, um, the Odleson private driveway, uh, to see the coverage between, uh, the driveway and the existing garage. Uh, it's actually pretty hard to see, um, uh, Randy and Andrea's, uh, house from that driveway because of the, it's a very thick cover of, uh, evergreen and deciduous trees.
And by the way, do they own the, the pool that sort of comes closer to the Odlesons' driveway? I, I see the Odlesons have a pool, I guess, uh, you know, next to their house as well. Are there, Odlesons have one or two swimming pools?
The Odlesons have one, and then there's a, um, house next to the Odlesons, kind of behind them, they have a pool.
Okay, yeah, because I knew that other one near the marsh at least used to belong to the, um, predecessor, uh, owners of the Odleson property.
Yes.
So that's still their pool.
Yes.
Covered up now, but covered for the winter, but.
Yep.
And that, and the pool that you see behind the Odleson house is actually belongs to the house that's north of the Odleson house.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
It really is one of the best, you know, in my opinion, places to situate the, the addition because we do, that's where we actually park our cars. So essentially you'd have a structure over it. We, if you look at other places on the property to cite a, a garage, it would be really detrimental, I think, to this, to the property in terms, terms of its look. Um, so from fitting into the existing property and not changing the look of the neighborhood, uh, situating it kind of where it is right now makes the most sense and disrupts the property the least.
Okay.
Yep.
Questions in the part of the board? Whether the architect or their attorney or property owner?
I have no further questions.
Okay. I don't either. I think to Peter's point, we have the, the data. Now we have to, or later have to, uh, discuss the ramifications.
Yeah, I'd agree. I don't think I have any other questions. Uh, like Roger mentioned, I, I did just put another set of eyes on it actually today to just take another look at that buffer that exists out there, um, of the evergreens. Um, and I, to his point, I mean, it is a, a, um, a significant buffer. I know I had asked the question last time just about, could you, could you move the garage, the proposed garage eight feet, you know, to keep, to make it compliant? So, um, I was taking a look at that out there as well, but, uh,
The issue there, that the existing driveway and the existing, uh, terraces that come off the main entrance on that driveway side, uh, if you put the garage over there, you basically have to take out most of one of those, uh, terraced, uh, stone patios in order to get into the garage if you moved it over that far.
Okay?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
I don't have anything. Anybody else?
No.
Nope. So we should, um, all would be to, um, continue the hearing, uh, and to make an assignment for a draft decision tonight.
I'll move that we continue.
Okay.
Uh, I missed the first five minutes trying to figure out how to get on. Do we have a confirmed date for December?
First.
The first, okay. Then I move we continue it to December 1st.
Anybody second?
I second Peter's motion.
And move them seconded, all in favor by, uh, name so that, uh, you got recorded? Go ahead. Woody Chirikai?
Lee Darceau, aye.
Travis Higgins, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Peter Gerda, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, 6-0. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry for the technical difficulties.
Well-
It happens, that's for sure.
Roger, in our, in our next light, we'll have this, we'll have this all figured out.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, may I just, uh, mention, so, um, as we get ready for 488, we'll start promoting people, but I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that around 6:30 this evening, uh, we received a bunch of new plans, um, from the applicant, from 488 owners and representative. Um, so I'll start, if we could promote, um, Jeff Delisi, John Cavanero, Ryan Stasco, Stephen Noonan. And I think that's everybody. Like, someone can let me know if, if there's another Wyndham, but we have one Wyndham on as well. Um,
Well, there are two attorneys present, are there not? Or just one?
Yes, we have Jill, uh, Attorney Maxwell's, yep, and then, um, Jeff Delisi as well. So, um, just, just by way, just this evening, we did receive, um, a bunch of plans. Um, Woody had sent a memo of items that they were, that he had questions about. We received some which can be shared this evening. Everybody has sharing capabilities, so everybody will need to share on their own. Um, but, um, you know, we've, I've just gotten them, so we're going to have to get arranged to get copies and all of that. But I just want to let you know those are in your inboxes. Um, I sent them around 6:30, 6:45.
Oh.
So, I, I mean, this, we can see them, we can see them this evening if the board so wishes, um, but I just wanted you to know that, um, I did forward them before the meeting came on live.
Those are arriving too late to be intelligently, uh, discussed, but we can certainly acknowledge their presence and or their existence, I should say.
So if there's anyone that hasn't been promoted, just say it out loud and we can make, take care of it, but I'm gonna ghost away.
Okay, who's, um, well, with the various and sundry, uh, appeals, both sides have an appeal or, uh, an appeal before us. Who is leading off this evening?
I'd be happy to lead, Mr. Chair.
All right. Just tell us who you are again and-
Absolutely. Um, good evening, members of the board. My name is Jill Michael and I represent the Wyndhams who live at 482 Jerusalem Road. I wasn't able to make the first hearing and my colleague Jason Curtin attended. Um, and so I'm here tonight. I, I did review the initial hearing from September, so I'm caught up to speed in that regard. To set the stage here for further discussion and to address Mr. Stasco's recent submissions, I want to provide you with a high-level overview of where we are now and how we got here, which I think is really important. From our perspective, and as I'm going, going to explain in more detail, and I will delve into the plans that have been submitted, Mr. Stasco has been defiant for quite some time with respect to staying within the confines of the permits that have been issued to him by both this board and by Mr. Egan, and also with respect to complying with the zoning bylaws. As I will explain shortly when I, um, address the plan specifically, at this point in time, from our perspective, and I think it's frankly not disputed, Mr. Stasco has violated three permits that have been issued to him with regard to this project. He's violated that 2018 special permit that this board granted to him with, um, pertaining to plans that he submitted in November of 2017. He's violated a 2019 building permit that this board issued to him at that time in February 2019.
Wait, wait a minute, just slow down. I'm not sure this board issued.
Mr. Egan issued it. My apologies. This, the only permit that this board has issued is the 2018 special permit.
Okay.
The other two building permits that Mr. Stasco has violated are a February 2018 building permit, which related to the, um, addition that this board allowed per the special permit, and a 2020 building permit that was issued relating to the reconstruction of Mr. Stasco's original structure. This noncompliance is clear, both from looking at the construction itself, and I'm going to show you some pictures that were taken today, and also from looking at the most recent plans that Mr. Stasco submitted. And these plans are wholly deficient in many ways. They fail to include dimensions and all sorts of other data that would be important for this board to look at. But from these plans, it's clear that each of these three permits were violated. So why, why are my clients here? Why does this matter? So my clients, as you all know, live next door at 488 Jerusalem Road, and these violations, which include violations with regard to height, with regard to setback, have intensified the nonconformities substantially and have increased the feeling of confinement, um, for my clients, which have created a substantial negative detrimental impact to them. As you know, let me just, I should have said this from the start, we have two appeals that are pending before this board. The first is an appeal of the issuance of the June 2020 building permit, and the second is an appeal of Mr. Egan's refusal to issue a cease and desist order stopping construction of the whole project because even before we had plans of precisely what was being done, my clients had serious concerns, which have now been validated, um, about what was actually going up because they didn't know. There weren't any plans to tell them what was going up, and visually it seemed like a much larger structure was going up than was allowed by this board. If, so because I think it's really important, I would like to just briefly go through a timeline of what happened here, um, because I think it'll give some color to the changes that have been made by Mr. Stasco over time and changes that, as I mentioned a moment ago, were, um, noncompliant with the bylaw and with this board's and with Mr. Egan's, um, two permits. So, going back to 2017, Mr. Stasco applied for a special permit to construct in addition to the then existing structure of his house. In February of 2018, this board granted that special permit, and the board stated at that time that any changes other than quote unquote minor field changes must be submitted to the board. And I understand that the other side is going to argue that all these changes were minor field changes, but there are so many changes and in and of itself, I don't think any one of them are minor, but when you take the whole of all of the changes, there's simply no question, these changes to the special permit that was issued by this board, where my clients had no knowledge of, are, are not minor. Almost a year later, in January of 2019, Mr. Stasco sought a building permit, um, relating to the construction of the addition. Um, in February of 1919, Mr. Egan granted that building permit. Fast forward another year and four months or so, um, and Mr. Stasco at that point in time had decided that he needed to raise the original structure, and he applied for a building permit before Mr. Egan for the reconstruction of that structure. And I, I included in my recent submission a photograph, and again, I think this just colors this whole series of events, showing that Mr. Stasco actually started, knocked down, raised the property, and actually started construction before the building permit was even issued. So, fast forward, June 2020, he applies for a building permit, and on June 25th, Mr. Egan grants that building permit with regard to the construction, reconstruction of the original structure. A couple of days later, and at this point, we had gotten involved and raised some issues with Mr. Egan regarding some nonconformities that we thought required a special permit and were not allowed as a right with regard to that reconstruction. And on July 1st, 2020, Mr. Egan sent a letter and clarified slash reversed his building permit, and this is very important. So he made a statement in that letter with regard to both the special permit and with regard to the reconstruction of the original structure. And this is what he said, and this really ties to everything we're talking about here. He said, with regard to the special permit, he said, "The permit issued on February 4th, 2019 is for and only for the work that was approved under the special permit issued by the ZBA on February 12th, 2018. It allows for the construction of an addition to the north side of what had been the existing structure based on the plans dated November 1st, 2017." Okay? Then with regard to the reconstruction of the original structure, Mr. Egan said, "The permit issued on June 18th, 2020," it was actually the 25th, "allows for the replacement of what had been the existing structure. That work is limited to the exact replacement of that structure on the same footprint with no increase in vertical section of any portion of the building other than the proposed attic dormer on the east elevation that was shown on the November 1st, 2017 plan." Mr. Egan also said, "If there are any plans to vary from these, the special permit and the building permit, that they would need to come back to him for another permit or go to you all, um, for a special permit." To date, there's been no other building permit application that's been filed. Mr. Stasco, in the meantime, has continued with construction, violating both the building permits and the special permit, along with the bylaws, and boldly continuing on despite that he was using plans that we had never seen. We never knew what exactly he was constructing. And in fact, what he was constructing was well beyond what this board had approved and what was well beyond, and was well beyond what Mr. Egan had approved. To be frank, and as you'll see when we go through these plans, there are so many problems with this project and with Mr. Stasco's complete disregard of this board's decision and Mr. Egan's decision, that it just simply cannot be allowed if the bylaws are to have any meaning at all. With regard to the addition, the construction is expanded beyond what this board allowed to include additional intensifying nonconformities and significant expansion of construction into the front setback. With regard to the reconstruction of the original structure, again, construction has continued, increases in nonconformities have gone beyond what was allowed as a right, and he's continued on. So, one last thing before I get into the actual documents. I want to stress that from the beginning of- I want to stress that from the beginning of construction this past summer, my clients' concerns have really been twofold. My clients don't want to be here, they don't want to be litigating this. They want the bylaw and the special, and the building permits complied with. The first is, they never really knew what was going up, because they hadn't seen any plans regarding what was going up. The plans that were submitted to Mr. Egan, the plans that Mr. Stasco relied upon in June of 2020, were devoid of any significant or any even minimal information to allow them to determine whether Mr. Stasco was actually building within the footprint of the house and whether he was exacerbating any nonconformities that weren't allowed. That's number one. And number two, once construction started, it was so clear to my clients, just by looking, because you have to understand, they live right next to this house, so they see it every day. They go up to their second floor deck every day, and they see how the building is and how it's different than before. It was so clear to them from the very beginning that this construction was so much bigger than what was there before, and the addition was so much bigger. That, but they didn't have any plans, and so even though they could see it, they couldn't see it on paper. So now here we are, last Thursday or last Tuesday, I'm sorry. Mr. Stasco submitted some plans, his board had required him to submit some plans. And even though, as I said a moment ago, those plans are wholly deficient and lack critical information, those plans make it crystal clear that their concerns were well-founded, that the building was so far beyond what anyone had allowed, that it's frankly rather shocking. Again, Mr. Stasco's proceeded, just a pace, he wants to get the building done. He's apparently not concerned about waiting to see if perhaps there might be some there there, which I would submit to you all there is. And it's really problematic. So what I'd like to do now is I'd like to do two things. I'm gonna share the screen, and the first document I'm gonna show you, which might have more meaning after I show you the plans, but I'd like you to see some pictures that were taken today. One moment. Okay, can everybody, everybody see that? So I'm gonna just scroll, there's a lot of pictures here, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I want you to just get a sense of, this is the building. And I'll just remind you that the building permit to reconstruct the original structure wasn't issued till June. When I got involved in this matter in June, they had just started, so there had been numerous appeals filed at that point in time. Mr. Stasco appeared before this board in September, and nonetheless, again, with apparently no concern as to whether or not maybe, like I said before, there were some there there, which there clearly is, he continued a pace. So I'm just gonna scroll through these pictures, and you'll have a better sense of it once I show you the plans, but I did just want you to get a sense. So this right here, you see the bump out in the back. So Mr. Stasco, despite this board's urging that he not go ahead with the bump out pending determination of this matter, he did proceed. Mr. Egan ultimately got involved and told him to stop, stop building the bump out. So that's why there's a sheet over the bump out, but that being said, he continued with everything else. So this, I'm just gonna scroll down just again, so you can get a general sense. This is what the building looks like today. And again, this has all happened since June. So this is a picture that I think is very telling from my client's second story. And if there's, you can see their balcony, and you can see how close this building is, and you can understand how the intensified nonconformities really impact them on a day-to-day basis. This is not, this is not, not, this is impacting their lives. This is my client's driveway, and you can see the house. This is from Linden Road. This is also from Linden Road. Okay, so I wanted to just give you a sense of what we're talking about and where we are, and the fact that this construction has gotten this far despite the very real problems here is really problematic. So now I'm gonna jump into the plans, and I'm gonna toggle a little bit between the 2017 approved plans, which were approved by this board, and the 2020 plans that were recently submitted with some markings that John Cavanaro and his office made to sort of make the situation a little clearer. So this is the 2017 plan that this board approved. And the shaded area is the area that's within the 30-foot front setback. This is, I should say, this is the front, this is the front of the property, this is the west side. This is the side that faces Linden Road. Do you see the blue? This is a foundation plan. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna just toggle to the 2020 plan.
Can we just slow down for a sec? So there are six sonnet tubes in the setback and the shaded portion.
Correct, exactly. There are six sonnet tubes, there's no foundation there whatsoever.
Right.
There's no second-story roof. This is what you approved. So now let's look at 2020.
We don't see an elevation always. Okay, here you go.
Sorry, I don't mean to. Okay, here's, so the blue, I should say, was done by Mr. Cavanaro's office. So he was trying to, you know, make it clear what exactly, what the expansion of the of the nonconformity was and the intensification. So again, this is the 2017 plan that you approved, the foundation, this is the foundation. And this is what was, what was, this is what we got last Tuesday, minus the blue, which we put in. And it shows how the foundation has expanded significantly into the 30-foot setback. And now the foundation has actually expanded to the sonnet tubes. So where before, that simply wasn't the case, again, just to go back, just to get a sense. We've expanded it significantly, and it's expanded into an area that what previously existed was an uncovered deck, so that's what you all approved. Again, this in and of itself is not a minor change. Regardless, even if this didn't require Mr. Stasco to come back to you, which I think it absolutely should, the building permit didn't allow for this, the building permit issued with respect to the addition. And this is simply just well beyond what's permissible, just on his own accord, without coming to you all. So, so I'm gonna go there first. I'm gonna toggle a little bit now, I'm gonna move on. Again, back to.
You have, not necessarily at this moment, but you have statistics, dimensions of of what we approved in terms of the amount in the setback, square footage-wise, and what the 2020 as-built plan has, I'm sure you do.
You know, I think so, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Cavanaro address.
Okay, well, it looks, all right, all right.
I don't wanna mess up.
Keep going, keep going, okay.
Okay, so now moving on, this is the 2017 plan, this is, the green was there, was Mr. Stasco shading, showing the area that was within the 30-foot setback. And now, let me go. So this, this isn't shaded, but you can see again how, this is the first floor, by the way. You can see how the, the, there's an extension, obviously, to the sonnet tubes. Okay. Now I want to go. This is the 2017 plan. This is what this board approved. One second, I just wanna turn my hard copy page. The green was by, was colored by Mr. Stasco, it shows the addition that was approved by you all. And you'll notice the basement, that foundation hadn't been added. You'll notice how the second-story deck was, just came out just a little bit. And another thing I want to point out is, you'll notice with regard to the original house, that the roof didn't quite come up, that the addition's roof was, was higher than the roof of the original structure. Okay, so now I'm gonna go, this is the 2020 plan that was submitted this week. And this is the west elevation, so this is again facing Linden Road. I'm just gonna toggle back real quick, just so you can just sort of see the other one, so that was what you approved. This is what is there now. The blue, once again, Mr. Cavanaro's office shaded that to show a couple of things. Number one, Mr. Stasco submitted plans with some crosshatches, with some red crosshatches, to show changes that had been made, but it didn't include all that cross, all the areas that actually changed from the issuance of your special permit to now. So what we've done, the blue is ours, the blue shows the areas that have changed. Their crosshatching simply doesn't, doesn't tell the whole story. So as you'll see, there's a significant increase in the facade of the front setback facing Linden Drive here, which increases the intensity of the nonconformities and increases the volume within the front setback. I had mentioned the roof a minute ago, so this was the roof in the 2017 plans? Well, if we go to 2020, now the roof, roof has been increased in the original structure. The roof has been brought so that the original structure and the addition are at the same level. And now, the roof is now vertically further into the 30-foot setback. Again, they didn't crosshatch this, we did. By bringing the height of the building higher and extending the wall vertically, more of the new building is encompassed within the front setback. I mentioned before, you'll see the balcony here, the 2017 plan that you approved. Go to 2020 plan, and you see the balcony is significantly larger, and there's a roof. The basement area, 2017 plan, you'll see the grade there. You look at the 2020 plan, the basement area under the first-floor balcony extends the facade down, and again, extends the nonconformities within the front setback and exposes the basement and the foundation. Again, not crosshatched, that's significant. The dormer up here is also much larger. The front wall of the dormer, I believe, will match the front wall of the house, and I'll just go back to the dormer. Actually, there's not a dormer there. The dormer, I think, came later, but it wasn't this big. And obviously, it, the height of the roof hadn't been increased, so that wasn't an issue at that point in time. Okay. Let's see here. Actually, I'm just gonna go to the next page, which is the proposed south elevation and the proposed north elevation. Let me make the page. Okay, so this, like I said, is the proposed north elevation and the proposed south elevation, and there's a number of things that I would also like to point out here. So they have the red on this, actually, let me minimize this a little so you can see it all. The red on this is their crosshatching, the blue, like the prior pages, is our highlighting of areas that are problematic that were not identified by then. So their crosshatching, if you look over here on the south elevation, you can see that they've acknowledged that the facade within the front setback will increase in height from the special permit approval. And this is the, this is what the Windhams will see here on the south side. The dormer has increased in height, which has increased the nonconformity there. The addition, there's been an increase in nonconformity of the addition. A larger part is now within the front setback. And another thing I want to point out, we talked about the roof a minute ago, or I talked about the roof being increased or increased in height. So if you look at this pink line, so that was the original roof, that was the roof that you approved. So now, here we go, this is all new. And if you, if you think back to the pictures I showed, you can see, you can see it from the windows. I mean, this is visually, this is very noticeable and very significant. With regard to, let me just make sure I got everything here that I wanted to tell you. This is that bump out that we talked about, I showed you, it wasn't, it was framed but not quite finished. And we have a disagreement, I believe, and I know this was addressed at the last hearing, as far as whether or not the area, the side across from Linden Road, which would be the east side, is the rear yard. We take the position that is absolutely the rear yard and not the side yard, and I would cite to the definitions and the bylaw for that, which says, I don't have it in front of me, but it says that every front yard must have a rear yard. I included in my submission a case that was decided by this board that found that, on a corner lot, I should say, we're talking about a corner lot here. For a corner lot, when you have a front yard, you have, you have a rear yard. If this is considered a rear yard, as we take the position that it should be, this addition and this area in blue is all outside of the 30-foot setback.
You say outside, what do you mean? Is it within the setback or?
Correct. I apologize, that's when you know that I'm a lawyer and not an engineer.
Okay, no, no, I anyways, it encroaches into the.
Correct, exactly. So however, I just want to point out, and again, it's, we take the, we strongly feel like this is the, as if this is the rear and that the law and your prior decisions support it. But even if this board were to consider this east side, the side yard, even then, there are some serious problems with with height here, the height.
This is the Windhams lawyer blasting Stasco.
Wait, 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 Charlie, you're not muted. Mute yourself if you're gonna make comments.
So there's some serious problems here. So I want to point out some issues with height. Here you see a railing. This railing is new, and I'm just gonna toggle back up so you can see it here. It's the same railing as this railing, okay? So that railing is higher than 15, this is assuming it's a side yard, which again, this is my, my my alternative argument, because I don't believe that to be the case. The height with respect to that railing was not measured properly. So in measuring height here, the measurements should be taken to the highest point of the roof within the 20-foot setback. And if this is a side and not a rear, this balcony and railing is within that 20-foot setback. I'm just gonna go back up so you can see. This pink line here, that's showing what's within the 20-foot setback. And this, this would exceed 15, 15 feet. With this kind of railing, the top of the railing would be like a parapet. So when you measure the height, you measure to the top of the railing for a flat roof, which this is. So the top of the railing here would be within the 20-foot setback, and it's higher than 15 feet. So this is too high. And the same would, could be said for, the same would be said for this addition, I'm sorry, I'm gonna toggle down again, which is here. As far as height is concerned, if this board decides this isn't a rear yard, but it's a side yard, even then, it's too high. So what Stasco's done is they've measured to the midpoint of this sloped roof to determine whether or not the height exceeds 15 feet. But that's not proper. The way that you measure is you measure from the top of this sloped roof. Even if it's not a rear, then anything within that 20-foot setback, which is more than 15 feet in height, needs to be reduced, or he needs to come to you for a special permit. So there are really significant issues relating to height, as well as all the other issues that I raised. I want to show you. We tried to find some photograph or photographs of the old house, and we had a little bit of a hard time, but I did, my client did find one, and I thought it was pretty telling. So this picture was taken today, like the other pictures that I showed you. This is, this is the Windhams' house right here. This is Mr. Stasco's house that he's constructed in the last however many months. Now let's go down, this is, this is, this is what it used to look like. And again, the plans speak more than a picture, but I think the picture and the other pictures I showed you are really, really telling. And I think they really highlight what is going on there and how this is, you know, the bylaws speak to, you know, the key purposes of the bylaw here include providing adequate light and air and preventing overcrowding. And I've shown you how close my client's property, especially in that rear part, gets to this, this structure. And it just, it, this structure wholly doesn't take into account those bylaws, notwithstanding the fact that the construction also violates all the permits that I mentioned earlier. So in summary, as I mentioned, and I showed you the plans, and I know I went through it maybe too quickly, but all of, and again, we're still lacking information, but even with the information that we have before us right now, Mr. Stasco has clearly, number one, violated the special permit that you all issued in 2018. And again, all we have to do is go back to this 2020 plan that we blue highlighted, and we see all the areas that he expanded and intensified in the nonconformities without approval, without approval, and just went forward boldly, very boldly, and just constructed this house, notwithstanding that there are. and just constructed this house, notwithstanding that there are really serious issues that are really impacting my client substantially. He also violated, as I said, the 2019 special, uh, building permit because Mr. Egan never told him he could do this. This is all new. He, Mr. Egan never told him he could raise the roof. And then finally, Mr. Stasko violated the 2019, or pardon me, 2020, um, building permit because there's no question that he's gone beyond what was allowed with respect to this, um, with respect to this, um, reconstruction of the original structure. So for all of those reasons, notwithstanding, like I said earlier, that Mr. Stasko really is missing some, some information here and hasn't provided adequate information. And the fact that I'm having to blue line these plans and these aren't being shown to you is quite problematic in itself. We take the strong position that this board needs to grant, needs to grant, grant our appeals, number one, and, and stop this project and, and have it done right. Because this could have been done right. Like I said before, my client doesn't want to be here. My client doesn't want to be spending lawyer money fighting this. But this is just so far beyond the pale. And these are neighbors that have to live next to each other. And it's just wholly improper. Um, and so I really would urge this board to take a very serious look at what has been done here. The fact that Mr. Stasko has ignored, you all ignored Mr. Egan, and it's just not appropriate. And in the face of him knowing that my clients had some really serious, really legitimate, really well-based arguments. Um, and with that being said, I want to see if, um, Mr. Cavanaro has anything to add, because like I said before, I'm not an engineer and.
I just want to jump in for a second. You, you've shown us on the, on the rear of the house. And by the way, I, at least as a party of one in this board, accept your definition of rear lot line, every front line. You know, you can have one front line and you'd have to have one rear. And you, uh, but be that as it may, you've shown us what the construction looks like if you, uh, have a 20-foot setback. But what about a 30-foot setback, which is a rear line? Did you show us that and I missed it or?
You know, let me actually look and see if there's a, a, a 30-foot rear line. That's a very good question. And if I can't answer it, then I'll ask Mr. Cavanaro to, uh, let me just see here. So let me just see if I can increase this.
I don't believe it's on any of these plans, Jill.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's just, let's just make a note of that. I would like to see that at some appropriate moment. Doesn't have to be tonight, but.
Just to simplify, the lot is about 70 feet wide. So 30 feet from the front, 30 feet from the rear, you'd have about 10 feet in the middle of the house.
All right, but I'm, I'm interested in what was, um, not there before. I mean, if, if, if they're reconstructing per 8.9, you know, and staying with the absolute envelope, fine, they have that right. But, uh, if they're doing any further encroachments, I'd like that depicted in the plan so I can follow it. Anyway, go ahead, John.
So, um, not to add much more from what Jill just explained, really the, the things that we're interested in, because a lot of these decisions will be precedent-setting, is that we get clear definition from the board, uh, regarding minor changes to special permits, uh, that seem to be the real big topic here. There's been substantial changes, especially in the front yard setback on Linden Drive. Notwithstanding the rear yard setback issue, but really just identifying specifically, um, whether or not these are minor changes with respect to special permit that's, that's live. Um, and secondly, the height calculation. Uh, we, we question some of the methodologies because methodology is critical here, uh, as it relates to, again, setting precedent. Uh, if, if Jill would allow her, uh, Jen would allow me to share the screen, I'd just like to pull up a couple of things real quick. Uh, what I'd like to go to is a site plan that identifies the measurement of the average grade around the building. And in that site plan, it's mentioned clearly that the average grade around the dwelling, um, was essentially calculated using 2009 topography. The grades are taken at the edge of the existing and proposed structure. The grades are added up and divided by the amount of grades to relative mean grade. So that in itself is, is questionable, and I'll get into that in a second. The second thing is, uh, they, they refer to a note that says, "Contour and spot grade elevation shown here on are the results of an on-the-ground survey performed on January 9th, 2009. The elevation data was captured prior to the newly constructed garage on the subject property and may not reflect current existing conditions in some areas." So th- there's two things really with the determination of the average grade, because it's important as it establishes the baseline from which we're gonna measure height, whether or not rear yard, side yard, uh, maintaining existing non-conformities. We really need to be comfortable, the board that is, in terms of the methodology and setting this precedent for how height is measured. So when this average grade calculation was done, we're presuming that it was based on the spot grades that are shown on this plan, which ended when we had a sonotube, uh, deck and pergola porch, uh, above. We had a small porch with a balcony. And the grades, the proposed grading did not, and, and did not encapsulate the entire perimeter of the proposed structure as it is today. Now, this is all full foundation. There's space beneath this. This is a roof structure. So the question is, had, did this include the entire perimeter? The other thing that's, that's critical here in terms of actually determining the grade is that there's a substantial drop, uh, from this corner of the existing garage across the front of the garage. As you can see here, the grades dropped from about 35, 36 at the front of the garage down to about 29. So this is about a five-foot drop here that you can see on the, on the architectural plans. So with, right here, you can see they figured out their grade. They, they had a grade here and, and maybe they did include this drop, but it's just not clear. So the question is the methodology of determining that average grade. And as Jill pointed out, the verification of when we're taking advantage, let's assume this is a, a side yard, because these are the plans that we have. We don't have anything determining a rear yard, uh, in, impact, that the height is measured in accordance with the bylaw to the top of the railing for a flat roof. And whether or not in areas that you're taking advantage of a side yard setback, whether or not the portion of the main building includes the entire portion, um, within the setback. In other words, the, the bylaw says, "Portion of the main building less than 15 feet in height may be located within the setback." So right now, it looks as though a portion of this height, a portion of the sloped roof would be above 15 feet and of course, the top of the railing. So how the height is calculated and how these measurements are, uh, projected onto the proposed plan, th- those are the sort of precedent-setting things that we want to just get clarification on. That's it for me.
Questions of the board, from the board? We can hear from the other side and then go back and ask questions? Or are there clarifying points you'd like to, uh, raise at this, having heard from the Wyndham's, uh, lawyers and engineer? Yeah, Peter?
Um, John, just to, uh, elaborate a little more on the average grade, uh, um, issue. Uh, last meeting, we talked a bit about, you know, whether it was relevant to use the portion of the building that was in question or whether we'd use the average grade around. And the average grade around, um, uh, I think has been the town's go-to. Um, are you prepared to, um, discuss? I mean, y- y- you talk about setting precedence and, and I agree that height and average grade have been ticklish things in this town and this zoning board for a long time. Are you prepared to discuss the implications you're seeing on this particular project, uh, with respect to average grade? Or do you not have figures to rebut, uh, the figures that I believe we were given for tonight?
So we did a preliminary calculation based on the site plan that I just showed, the applicant's site plan. And using the entire perimeter of the structure and taking into account that drop at the existing garage, we believe that the average grade would drop by about a foot. So it, it's not clear to us how the methodology was, was determined on the application, but using the methodology that we typically employ, uh, on a consistent basis, that we use the perimeter of the entire proposed and existing structure with a pre-construction grade. And we weight that based on the amount of building that has a specific elevation. So the, the two things that are coming up on this application is that we're using grades that are almost over 10 years old. That will answer some questions. Number two, it's not clear that the entire perimeter of the structure has been used.
So, um, just because I'm trying to make sure I understand, um, when you say the entire structure, you're talking about the structure that includes the now-covered porch to the north as opposed to the, uh, previous, um, uh, plan, which showed an uncovered porch to the north as one, one change in your thought process. And then the, the, that existing garage, you're not talking about the garage that existed that fell in or whatever. Uh, you're talking about the garage that the, uh, owner built, uh, as probably our first of the, uh, special permits? Which garage, which, which, which garage are you talking about?
The existing garage that's.
That's there now?
Today.
Yeah, okay. And you, and you say that the net of those two, um, changes in, let's call it, methodality or methodology or conditions, the net is about a foot?
Yes.
Okay, are there other clarifying questions for them before we hear from the other side? David, were you just making a noise or do you have something?
No, I have no, at this point.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back. We'll, we'll, we'll come back. I think we need to hear from the other side and, and, um, pursue it that way. But I want to give everybody a chance. Okay, so why don't we turn it over to, uh, Mr. Stasko's attorney and other, any other experts you may have brought along?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chittick and members of the board, Jeff DeLeese. Uh, I'm here tonight with, uh, Ryan Stasko as well as Steve Noonan, who is our architect from, uh, Axiom Architects. Uh, we've also had some semidals from Merrell Engineering in our survey. Mr. Ahberg from, uh, Merrell, uh, is in surgery this, uh, either today or tomorrow and is unable to attend tonight. Um, just, uh, just at the outset, there's obviously a lot of information to go through here. I wanted to just kind of, out, out of the gate, um, indicate to the board that the, um, with respect to average grade, um, the, the calculation of average grade was set forth on the special permit approved plan, uh, and approved and set at that number. Um, and, and so after our last meeting, uh, since it was clearly the consensus of the board that you should be using the average grade around the entire perimeter of the structure, um, we, we took that number because it is set as the average grade with respect to this project, which hasn't been appealed. Um, and we utilize that, um, average grade in order to calculate height. Um, our, our architect could speak to the calculation of height. Um, and I'm gonna let him do that. I also wanted to point out, uh, that with respect to the call as to the side yard, rear yard question, again, um, we have a 2014 special permit with, um, concerning the, the garage that, uh, that called the subtly side yard, uh, a side yard. And then we have a 2018 special permit from the board with respect to this property that called both the subtly and the easterly yards side yards, um, without, uh, rear yards. And so there is precedence and there's precedence with respect to this property. And I think that that's important because when you step back and you put the shoes on of Mr. Stasko, who's not a monster, who didn't mislead, uh, Bob Egan and, and act boldly. He communicated with Bob the entire time. Uh, when you put on, when you put on his shoes, um, he's looking at the project with respect to what was approved when he's determining any minor field changes or suggested, um, you know, issues involving the site. That's, that's, those are the eyes and the viewpoint that he's looking at it. Um, so should there be some questions of interpretation of language concerning the definitions of rear yard? Um, I think that it's important for the board to note that the calls were made in this context already. And, and if there are precedent-setting situations, the precedent has already been established. Um, now, uh, on the issue of just the chronology, before I get it, I know we have a lot of materials. It's important for us to get through the materials. I understand that there were late submissions and the board is gonna be looking to continue this hearing so we can properly review those late submissions. I, I wanted to step back and just remind the board of how this, how this all transpired. We have a 2018 special permit. Uh, after the issuance of the 2018 special permit and it, after it became final, at some point in the, in late 2018 and early 2019, Mr. Stasko sat down and talked to Bob about the roof, about the bump out, about the porch. And Bob said, "Sure, y- you can, that's, you can do that." And so plans were submitted and plans do include specs on those issues. And Mr. Stasko and Mr. Noonan can talk to you about that. But this isn't some grand, you know, uh, loose and fast with the zoning bylaw and with the town and some ha-ha, you know, I'm gonna pull a, a fast one over them. These things were discussed and approved in a building permit. And that's what is being constructed. And now what we have is all of a sudden kind of a redo here. Uh, oh, now we need to call into question the average grade and the height. Oh, you know, the reason why we've continued to do the construction on the building is because we do have a building permit. And so when Bob Egan issues a letter in July of 2020 and says, "The only thing that you're permitted to do is to, uh, do what was approved by the ZBA and then reconstruct," um, that's wrong. That's flat out wrong. He issued a building permit. We have a building permit and that's what we're constructing. On the issue, uh, so since our last hearing, we have, we've been concentrating on five areas that we wanted this board, that we thought that this board requested, needed to see and further discuss. Um, building coverage, which was raised by Mr. Cavanaro. Lot foundation, uh, meaning, are you building within the same foundation that, uh, that, where you were previously? What, the average grade question, which Mr. Cavanaro has brought new arguments to the table now. Massing, which clearly is an issue to be discussed. And then the issue on the corner, you know, is it a corner lot as a re- a rear ya, a rear lot? Um, on that last issue, uh, I, I, I provided analogous situations with respect to, um, two other scenarios that we found where, um, the interpretation was made that there were two side yards and not, no. where the interpretation was made that there were two side yards and no rear yard, one at 35 Jerusalem Road Drive and one called Lot 9 Jerusalem Lane. There was a third matter which I put before the board, which involves Mr. Wyndham's lot next door. So Mr. Wyndham's lot next door is a through lot. It has frontage on two streets opposite one another. And the definition of rear lot line with respect to through lot is the exact same as it is with respect to corner lot. And when you look at the plan in that circumstance, what you see is no rear yard being called in, in, in this RV zone.
Well, how is that relevant at all?
Well, it's relevant because you asked for precedence. And so I'm showing you precedence. I'm not
We can get into precedent later. We have other precedent that we have accepted as a board.
Okay, so with respect to the issues of building coverage, foundation, average grade and massing, I'm gonna step back and, and ask Mr. Stasco, Mr. Noonan to address those issues. On the issue of 15 foot setback, 15 feet height, what is rear, what is, what is side? If the board is going to make a determination on that question, since this is a Jerusalem Road, address the house as Jerusalem Road, I'd be asking the board to make the call that the lot line where the garage is located opposite of Jerusalem Road would be that rear line. And we need to have some clarity on that issue. So should we decide that, for instance, we, we, we should be applying for a special permit on that bump out if we decide to actually construct it? We need to have an understanding there. So with respect to all those kinds of swirling issues, I'm just going to ask Ryan to address factually, you know, the other questions that have been before and, and raised tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. I know we all sort of don't want to be here. I guess I first wanted to just start, I guess, with the site plans and respectively, you know, going with what was approved in 2017. And I was hoping maybe to bring that up and share that with, with the board. And one second because I Okay, can can everybody see that? Oh shit, I'm sorry. I am trying.
Pretty well.
Okay, I just need to bring it up myself because I blocked it out. All right, so this is the, the 2017. No, I'm sorry. I am not used to doing this.
So Ryan, if you have something that you want me to pull up, I
No, I, I got it. I'm, I'm sorry, guys. All right. So, you know, again, too, I just want to reference, you know, because a lot of said that, you know, basically I've built outside the footprint, you know, of what was approved, both with the proposed addition and with, you know, the existing house. And, you know, one note that I want to sort of, you know, bring in too, is that with regards to the existing house, you know, 40% of the foundation, you know, was still there and it was used, you know, for, you know, for reconstruction right there. And with regards to, you know, basically distances, if we look at, you know, basically the 2017, you know, we're seeing like, you know, from Jerusalem Road to the proposed deck 146.5. You know, from Jerusalem Road, you know, to the proposed addition, you know, 161.1. And then, you know, on Linden Drive, we're seeing 18.9 and 17.9. And then, you know, on the side lot line, 20.3 and 20.1. And then also, you know, back with regards to that rear bump out, you're seeing 15.1 in the side lot line as well, too. With the, you know, the rear part of the house. I want to bring this up because when we go to the 2019, which I am going to close right now and I'm going to open the 2019, it's the Okay, here we go. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys. This has been I resumed share. I'm having a hard time getting into the
Ryan, if you want to, you want to close out, I'll pull up the 20
Yeah, okay, yeah. If you can pull out, you know, I'm, I'm going to close out.
What plan do you want?
I want the 2019 plan and am I, am I closed out right now?
I think you are.
Okay.
You want the 2019 plan?
Yes, the 2019 certified plot plan.
So that would be the building permit plan?
No, yeah, yeah, building permit plan 20, yes, yep, yep.
So let me, let me zoom in. So this is the February 2019 plan. Right?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
I can't see it.
You don't see my screen?
I see your screen, but it just shows the attachment seven. It's not opened.
Does anyone else see my screen?
No, I see, I see what Ryan's seeing. It's, it's a list of, you know, what, maybe 20 attachments one way or another and
Right, right. And it says I'm sharing this one attachment. I zoomed in on it. Okay, let's try this again.
No.
It's telling me I'm sharing this screen with you.
You're sharing the list of files.
Yeah, but I see what I, what I opened. Yeah, I, I understand. Yeah, let me
Let, let me try one more time.
You would actually, I mean, we have been inundated with plans, but one thing we have is this Merrill plan. Now, this is an as-built plan supposedly of 2020, but I think it may show what you want to
Well, Woody, I guess what I'm trying to get to is the 2019 plot plan is exactly the same as the, the 2017 minus the rear bump out and making the porch covered right there. The, you know, basically the distances, you know, 140, 146.5, 161, like all the distances around are exactly the same as the 2017. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention first. That basically the 2017 and the 2019 are identical with regards to what was, you know, basically approved. It's just that there was a rear bump out for the proposed addition. And instead of basically the, being the partial balcony, the full, full port, it became a full porch. But no dimensions changed. And that was my big, you know, the first point that I wanted to, you know, to point out right here because a lot's been said that we've extended the foundation and everything else, but you know, basically the, the setbacks have been set to the proposed porch, you know, and everything else. And that's what we built. So, you know, minus
So I'm just going to jump in is, is 40% of the foundation after the house was demolished was kept. And within that 40%, the foundation was used for the reconstruction. With respect to the remaining 60%, Merrill Engineering pinned the house with the foundation and discussed that with Bob as it went along. Am I right about that, Ryan?
I, I, I told Bob that I was pinning it right there, but Merrill didn't discuss it with Bob. But I was telling Bob that we are pinning, you know, pinning everything right there to make sure we are spot on.
Yeah.
But it's interesting though to me that you never considered the special permit that was granted in 2018. You basically ignored and went right by it and, and the special permit was pretty clear that anything that was going to be changed, and I see a number of things that are more than minor field changes, had to come to the zoning board. They didn't, it didn't say it had to go to the building inspector. He has no authority to overrule this board.
No, he doesn't have any authority, but you know, again, too, I talked to him about this and he, he felt that they were minor changes.
Well, it's not his decision, never mind. That will come on our deliberations. That's not his decision. He doesn't have that authority.
Okay, but with regards to the, the Merrill as-built foundation, you know, all the setbacks, you know, basically technically the foundation is a little bit smaller than what was proposed. And, you know, both with the existing house, the, the existing foundation is a little bit smaller from the Wyndhams with basically that, the, the rear bump out right there. And then also with regards to the the, the porch and the front deck as well. And also from the street as well, too. And, you know, basically the setbacks were set, you know, in the 20, you know, basically 17, you know, going, you know, from the porch. And, you know, we had made the decision that with regards to the porch, it being covered and the setback being there, that we could use stored, use some extra storage underneath. So that was the whole reasoning behind it since it was going to be underground right there. And since the setback was determined with regards to the porch from Linden. And then also, you know, since Bob did not see an issue with regards to having, you know, basically a covered, you know, basically porch on the front deck, since we already had basically a balcony and then also the pergola that was basically holding up the balcony. When you talk about area enassing with regards to that, it was going to be there anyway. It, you know, I mean, the columns and the pergola and the balcony were already there. The one thing with regards to this porch is it's basically putting plywood on top of the rest of it right there and covering it. But it's not going any higher or there's, you know, there's no other changes. Technically, with regards to the pergola, you know, it would be going intruding out into the airspace more because of the decorative, basically wood carvings that were going out. So this is actually more in line with the, the, basically the deck, you know, I mean, it's, it's more in line to where it's not protruding out into any setbacks anymore than, you know, it's less, less approach.
Well, this, I think I understand the, the footprint issue. Could you deal with elevations because, and, and go through the same sort of a sequence here? What would, what this board approved in 2018 in terms of elevations and what was approved, if you will, in 2019 building permit? And if there have been any elevation changes since the 2019?
I was going to let Steve hop in on that.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I think that's equally relevant. But it's, it's a little more, more telling here, but anyway.
Yeah, so as far as the proposed addition that was approved in 2017, like Ryan said, nothing has changed as far as what was approved. I even went out there a couple of weeks ago to verify the height of the building as he had built it and it came within, I think, three quarters of an inch or an inch of what was, what was drawn originally. And yes, he has gone to Bob and talked about rebuilt, raising and rebuilding the, the existing structure. And he, he raised the peak to be equal to the, to the proposed addition. And that was really in an effort to bring the second floor of the previously existing building up in line with the, with the
So that qualifies in your estimation as a minor field change?
In, in my mind, it was a minor field change.
Interesting.
And as, and any, anytime that I was, you know, a change was requested, we always verified. Again, I know you're saying that Bob doesn't have the authority to, to make that decision. But I would, we would always verify that Bob was consulted about this previously before we did any additional, additional drawing or, you know, change.
I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to see your plans or your version of plans. The, the plan that we approved in, in 2017 slash 18, basically, and the plan that Bob approved, if you will, in 2019 at the very least, and then any changes since then. But I, I'm not seeing any elevations here. I'm just seeing, hearing your words. Nothing has changed.
Let me see if I can
Certainly didn't deal with elevations anywhere in back of the proposed, you know, whatever you want to call it, improvement or, or whatever, you know, because that wasn't before us. So we couldn't have approved anything else.
Going to try to bring up some drawings here. Hold, hold, give me a minute. Give me one minute, sorry. I'm just trying to get to No. I'm just trying to, yeah, sorry about that. So I know you've already seen these drawings.
It's not up either.
Oh, you're not, you don't have it?
It's showing the same thing that we were dealing with.
You just seen
Well, maybe we should move on. Obviously, this is going to have to be continued because we don't have a full set of plans.
You should be going to your PDF or Adobe file, not the image or not the file name. You need to be going to, in your case, it looks like you're using Google Drive.
Yeah, I was, I just had something on my desktop. I was going to share.
Are you going to try to show us drawing A4? What drawing are you trying to show us?
I was just, yeah, I was just going to go to what the proposed, you know, the drawing that you've already seen as part of this, as part of the presentation. Showing the, the, what was approved at, at the 2017 hearing and with the existing house there, you know, with the peak lower.
Now, this, this is not what I'd like to see. I mean, show us the, the 2017 plan that we approved.
Okay. Can you see what I've got on the screen now?
Yes, yes, that's A4.
All right, I'm getting somewhere.
And A5 gives you the other elevations. That's A5.
Yeah, you're in 2019, Steve. Yeah, I had the other one.
All right.
You know, I, I think until we have an organized presentation, we should consider just, you know, continuing this. I mean, watching
Here we go.
People trying to
There we go.
Okay, so that's what we approved.
That's what you approved, yes.
So everything to the left, everything that was a little stippled is what we approved. We approved nothing to the right of that, that's
Right, that, that was previously, nothing was going to be done with that, with the existing house.
Right, and nothing, so nothing was approved. This is a non-conforming structure. So anything that would be you know, constructed or, or, or changed over on, on the right side would have to come to the board clearly to get the approval. And any change on the left, the stippled area, would also have to come to the board.
Yeah, nothing changed on the left.
Well, it certainly did, that second story porch.
Oh, right, right.
So that had to come before the board.
The balcony.
You'd have to admit that that had to come before the board and didn't, so it's not been approved in my estimation. And anything to the right, the roof line, et cetera, because it's a non-conforming structure, had, also had to come before this board and didn't. Because it's a nonconforming structure had also had to come before this board and didn't. There's nothing in chapter 48 that gives gives the building inspector the authority. To make decisions about nonconformity that are the province of the zoning board. That's against the law. I guess it's a question of what's minor and what's not. Well, we can deliberate on that. But to my mind, it's a, my mind is pretty clear.
Well, Woody, I just wanted to, I I probably should. Probably should read to you. I probably I probably should read to you. Just I just want to remind the board that there is that that there is case law on this. The SJC. Talks about small scale alterations.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna say that this parallels Yorkland, are you?
Well, the language, the language of the decision literally says examples of such improvements could include the addition of a dormer, which. Was done over there and the addition or enclosure of a porch or a sunroom. So I mean, it literally calls it out. So.
You think you can go through the list that the? That the SJC put in that decision and put every one of those in there and still call it a minor change?
We'd have to, we'd have to do that, right? But so it 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 indicates multiple items. And I've read to you the two items that it specifically indicates. That would fall in this category and that would meaning the. Concerns over the making of small scale alterations, extensions or structural changes to a preexisting house are illusory. Examples of such improvements could include the addition of a dormer, the addition. Or enclosure of a porch or sunroom, and then it goes on to talk about converting one. Story garages into two, excuse me, converting one car garages into two car garages. The addition of one story garage for no more than two motor vehicles where there wasn't one before. And and then it talks about the addition of small scale proportional. Storage structures such as sheds. And and it goes on. And then it continues and says, because of their small scale nature, the improvements mentioned. Could not reasonably be found. To increase the nonconforming nature of a structure. And we conclude as a matter of law, as a matter of law. That they would not constitute intensifications. And the would not constitute intensifications language is important because. What the what the the analysis is, as this board knows, is. If you're not intensifying. A preexisting nonconforming, nonconformity. Then as a matter of right, you have the right to permit. It's only when you're intensifying do you move to the next stage? Which is requesting the finding from the board of not substantially more detrimental.
About raising a roof? Raising a roof. Wouldn't that intensify a nonconformity?
Well, for some reason.
It doesn't speak to roofs at all in in Yorkland.
Yeah, and the I understand your position, Woody, on the issue of. Does Bob have the authority or not? Bob is the authority to issue. Building permits as we know, and when when an owner or an architect go to Bob and say, can we do this? They're they're looking for guidance and, you know. I understand what you're saying and and I think that. I think that especially being that we're having some technical issues tonight. The presentation's a little.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could go on. It wouldn't profit anybody to.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I think we've got to have a slicker presentation and some real comparisons, but. So I don't want to, I I'm sorry, I I got into a deliberative mode there with you, which is premature.
No, I was in a deliberative mode, so I my apologies.
I I do have a question for attorney Delisi.
Yep.
On this average grade issue. As you know. We. Have stamped plans that we consider. And we assume that the calculations that are made in those stamp plans are correct. Is it your position that if we approve a project? With a stamped plan? That anything that comes up after that? We are. Essentially stuck with. The calculation, even if it was wrong?
So I think that there isn't a stoppable argument to be made, David, especially in the circumstance where. Construction has begun in reliance upon. On upon a call on the average grade and the acceptance of the plan as part of your decision. So I I think.
We don't endorse and accept the calculations of the engineer. We accept the plan with the engineer's stamp. As a presumption that it's accurate.
And the plan becomes final when an appeal period passes and it becomes final.
If there's an error, I would think in the in the data submitted. That then kicks into us a six year statute of limitations, I think. If incorrect data is submitted to the board.
And I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
Maybe not. We'll see.
Yeah, I I'm not sure about that.
May I make a brief comment, please? Thank you. So I just wanted to, so we've been talking about this for a while. I feel. I encouraged you earlier and I'm going to urge you again that. I understand that we don't have all the plans that DASCO was required to provide at this moment, and therefore there's a. There's a desire to move this to another date, but this is, this has been how this whole process has been proceeding all along. I frankly, I find it absolutely mind boggling that. From the plans that I put up earlier and the plans that we've all seen, it is so crystal clear. That if you compare the 2017 plans that this board approved. With what we received last week, notwithstanding that it's the Board of Information. That these three permits were violated. There's no question. We can provide all the plans in the world to this board. But that that is just not not going to change. And what we're going to do is we're going to drag this on and we're going to drag this on and Mr. Stazza is probably going to have, you know, guys on the roof again tomorrow. And, you know, I apologize for being so impassioned about this, but this is literally impacting my client. On a day to day basis, it impacted them for many, many, many months when Mr. Stazza was digging in the ground before he even got the second building permit. And now it's been impacting them since June when he started building. Both structures, by the way, and frankly, this is one project. This has changed so dramatically. If my client knew back in 2017 that this is what they were going to be dealing with, they would have been sitting front and center at that table. They would have. And they they didn't, they didn't appear and they let this move on, but now this has turned into something completely different. With all of your decisions and Bob's decisions ignored. Bob, like you said, Chair, Bob doesn't have authority to be changing the. Suas ponte, changing your decisions. It's wholly improper. And so I understand that there there might be some push to to move this. This project, we, I see where this is going and it's just going to drag on. The construction is continuing. You saw the.
Okay, I I I hear you. It is not going to go on. It has been going on plenty already. And unless we get something that's. Very illuminating and I, well, I want the board to discuss what timetable we're going to put this under. And when we close the hearing. And when we render a decision because we just not, it's it's not productive. I agree with you to go on and on and on.
I guess Woody, part of. Like I kind of hear in her. Plea that the issue of stopping work and my understanding is we don't have the authority to issue a stop work. The building inspector does. And if he doesn't, the remedy is as it has been to appeal to to us. And when we get to the end of the process. We'll make a decision one way or the other, but I don't think that we have the authority at this point to intercede at all.
I I wouldn't disagree with you entirely. I wasn't thinking of that. I was thinking of. Setting a an end date to our, the hearing in front of us, but the appeals in front of us.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Well, to be clear, too, right, we have two appeals in front of us. One of them is the appeal of. Of Bob's building inspector's refusal to. You know, issue the cease and desist.
Bob's not here tonight, right?
He's not.
You know, so if one of those was. In other words. I know we we wouldn't get to the decision tonight, but that would be. Something to take a look at. I know last time. I think Woody was pretty clear that. This board would. You know, at the at the owner's expense, make sure that any wrongdoings were. Corrected. It was just a matter of. Of time. But I do agree that, you know. With this unpermitted extension that happened in early October. You know, from the neighbors' perspective and others, I'm sure that. Is solved on the wounds.
Would you say the last part again? I'm not quite.
Just, you know, the October. Unpermitted extension.
October of this year? What year are you talking about?
Yeah, yeah, but you know, in our. And I think my connection is getting bad. But the. Yeah, the bump out that 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 was some, you know, that Bob had to go out and 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 stop work on. You know, I think. What I was, what I was saying was, you know, I'm sure that that doesn't sit well with with the neighbor who has been looking for some action. And I think that, you know, one of the appeals in front of us is is to act on, you know. Bob's Bob's refusal to.
I think that's a good point, Matt. I mean, we don't have to. Consider all these three of these appeals together. We can. We could. Choose to deliberate on one of them, you know, close the hearing on one of them and deliberate if we wished. Let the other two go on. I think that's right, isn't it, Woody?
Yeah. Absolutely. And there are actually two appeals in the part of the Wyndham's. Although are they both still valid, Jill, or I mean, still active or have you withdrawn one and merged it into the other?
I don't know which way you want to look at it if you wanted to consolidate them, but but both appeals are active.
All right, all right, all right.
Maybe one of the appeals is is simply the issue of this stop work. The other one is is the appeal of the building permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at the last meeting, we were told that, you know, work would continue in the areas that there were certain that there would, that there were no. Additional nonconformities since the last meeting, what I've seen.
What is America? Okay, from the board's standpoint, what is the the merit or advantage of separating these appeals versus? Dealing of dealing in at one session with all three appeals?
The only advantage would be if we decided to consider the the stop work appeal. Immediately, we could stop work. Or not. And then the the issue on whether the building permit was. Properly issued would go on to the continued hearing.
So if I might, I I I think I can help help the board in this regard is. With respect to the bump out on that area that Matt. Just pointed out. I think that it's sensible. To consider that, you know, a stop. We would agree to that. And it might be that, you know, we might just have to. Apply to the board for a section 8.7 finding on that particular issue.
Well, you phrase it as we might have to. Are you? Can you be a little more definitive?
We will apply for a section 8.7 finding on that. And I was looking for a call from the. From the board that the, you know. We need to figure out which we're considering a rear if we're going to talk about a rear on that. And if we were going down that road. You know, I would ask the board, since the principal address is Jerusalem Road. That we that we use Jerusalem Road as the frontage road so that we can. Properly consider the plans from that perspective moving forward.
I I did send the board, I don't know whether it got to you or not, but. Basically, a summation of of. Ben Lacy's 2008. Decision and guidance for this board saying that basically what the. Attorney for the Wyndham said is that every lot has a front. And consequently, every lot our bylaws say has a rear. And on a corner lot, you can have two fronts from a setback standpoint, which gives you one sideline. You can have one. Side setback or two side setbacks, but you must have a rear setback and you must have a front setback. And that is the principle the board has. Followed. I must admit, we didn't pay much attention to it in 2018 because the rear was not at issue. There was no activity. Going on in the rear really, other than a by right reconstruction. You know, of of a building. So we didn't spend any time on. Debating that, but I I for one, and I have a great respect for Ben, and I look at our bylaws, say that. The rear is the rear and Linden Drive is a is a front from a from a front or from a setback standpoint, but from a. Frontage standpoint, it's Jerusalem Road.
So if if that's the consensus, just so that we can. You know, properly. Properly come in with a proper application that calls one of them a rear. And so that that would be.
Well, unless somebody on the board wants to object to that interpretation. But it's supported both by the. The letter of our bylaws as well as Ben Lacy's logic, which I kind of synthesized.
And and I'm not sure what the consensus is. I mean. I I i- if the consensus of the board is that the dormer and enclosing the porch are. Not minor and require the board's. Take on this, right, or consent?
I think we're going to have to talk about that.
Does that, Woody, though, does that come in as a as a? If somebody comes in and if there's a, if there's a decision, a special permit decision. And the decision says you have to come to us for any change that's not minor. Is that coming to you for a new permit or is that coming to you for?
We would say, yes, that is minor. You want to, you want to add a window where there wasn't a window or or some such thing. Or no, it's more than minor and we need to consider that in 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 light of our of our decision. Do we need to amend our decision? Or not?
So it would be, it would be either an amended decision. Or a an agreement that the change was minor.
Yeah, and I mean, in a couple of cases. I can think of literally one where somebody wanted to add a window. Over in Beach Street. You know, it didn't protrude or anything. I mean, that was an easy call.
Yeah.
I can think of some other situations that aren't quite so. But we have to at least informally in the past and have Bob come before us and say, here's what's going on. What do you think? Should it, should the, should the permit? Be amended or is this okay? I mean, you know. It's pretty hard to generalize.
Yeah. I'm, I just wanted some clarification on that. And I just wanted to point out that, you know. Some of the discussion tonight is centered around. The facade, the 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 roof and the dormer on Linden. And the. And the the porch enclosure. And I just would just would want to point out to the board that. While I can understand the argument that. Perhaps the southeasterly corner bump out addition. Is something that affects. The Wyndham's, I I would ask the board to 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 kind of question the applicant on how the front of the building affects the legal rights. Of the Wyndham's because they do have to demonstrate that they're agreed with respect to matters like that.
Okay.
And and so I I, you know, for the for the board to even hear those those issues, but. Where I'm where I'm leaning is, you know, I'm wondering whether whether it just makes sense if we're coming in on an addition. And I'd have to talk to Mr. Stazko about this, but if we're coming in on a special permit for the addition in the rear. May maybe we just include the changes and. See where the board comes down on 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 whether those changes are substantially more detrimental to the. See where the board comes down on 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 whether those changes are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Than what was previously there. You know, and we we obviously need to quantify because remember. A we're talking about a couple of different permits here, right? We're talking about. A special permit and a building permit that deviated from the special permit. And then we're talking about. An as of right reconstruction under eight point nine. And, you know, I'm not sure, you know. The way I read the bylaws, you have the right to build within the vertical plane of the foundation. So, you know.
I mean, the as of right, it doesn't really concern us. If you will, I mean, you know, it's. It doesn't. Maybe we what we have to determine is, you know, was it within the vertical plane or not? Or is there any evidence to the contrary? But.
If it was in the vertical plane, did you add more? Within the vertical plane, did you add more nonconformity?
Yeah. By going up higher? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that has to be determined.
Yeah, I I I'm just trying to. I'm just trying to be constructive because I, you know, that this hearing, this hearing is. Upsetting on a few different levels and and one of the fundamental levels, and I tried to point this out at the beginning, was that this isn't, you know. If Bob did or didn't have the authority. Right to make this call. It certainly wouldn't wasn't unreasonable for Mr. Stasco to to ask him if if he if he should have gone to the board. You know. It is the job of building inspector to say, no, 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 I'm not going to issue that permit because this is a change. And you you know, your permit requires you to go to the board. I mean, Mr. Stasco is a pilot. He's not. He's not. This isn't what he does for a living. So. Any, any, any changes that were done, you know. I understand your point. It it's it's unfortunate, you know, that we are where we are now, but it's not. Because he's, you know, he's trying to. To get one over on anybody.
Okay, yeah, no, I saw that.
Right thing.
I mean, yeah, I don't. I don't. I'm not trying to attribute any. You know, malevolent.
But but I'm hearing I'm hearing that from the other side and I and I.
Well, they 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 haven't. You know, yeah, but I don't think that. And, you know, outright insulted Ryan. I wouldn't stand for that, but they are making a strenuous. Argument, but. I don't think this board is is probably internal, you know, has has taken that on as a. As a point of view.
Good. So what I would ask the board is is I would I would tell the board that. We're not going to. We're not going to do any any more work over there on that. On that area. We're we're going to need to kind of, as a team, get together and reevaluate. You know, what and where we do things. I'm going to ask the board for some time to allow us to do that. Before it makes a decision on any of this with the understanding that we're not gonna. We're not going to touch that southeasterly addition, no doubt. If we're going to build it at all, it's it's going to be pursued.
Is the not touching it confined to that bump out area? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, I I'm not prepared to discuss anything other than that. Coming into this meeting tonight, I discussed that.
How's the board feel about that? I I.
I would just. I would just wonder, I I believe at the conclusion of the last meeting. That was the commitment. And I guess my question to would be what? Measures are in place. This time that make it any different than the last time, other than. You know, your. Commitment, which we had last month.
Yeah, the applicants, yeah, Matt, have requested that all. Construction cease and desist, not just the bump out construction. That's what their appeal is.
Go ahead. Sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
Woody, could I? Could I just jump in for one second? Two, you know, there was a misunderstanding with regards to the the bump out, you know, I had. You know, and and I clarified it with Bob. I, you know, I'd assumed with regards to what town council had said last meeting. That I had, you know, basically valid permits and I could pursue at my own peril. And I was only going to do the first floor on the bump out, but then when Bob. And everybody, you know, talked to me, I said, okay. I'm not going to do that, you know, I'm sorry, you know, I misunderstood, you know, I thought that, you know, basically I could at least do the first floor on the bump out to try to enclose. The structure because winter was coming. And so that was the only thing I was doing was just trying to enclose it right there because basically water is already been getting in and damaging everything. And so. I will not build that bump out, but I'm going to have to try to basically at least enclose, you know, what was already there by right and, you know, basically cover up. You know, basically that side to make sure no elements get in.
If I could just make a quick comment, and you probably know what I'm going to say at this point, but I I really think at this point, we're having this discussion about what changes might be made and all the things that deviated from the two thousand seventeen plans. And I think at this point, it's really appropriate to. Address and deliberate and decide the issue of the cease and desist order, which is a separate. It's a separate appeal. I've identified in my presentation, along with Mr. Cavanagh, all sorts of issues that are not minor unequivocally. And. As was just mentioned, the bump out. Construction proceeded. The construction will probably will proceed if if it's not stopped. And frankly, at this point, given where we are. Given what we've talked about. And given the issues, it it it's makes perfect sense at this point to just hold off, which is what frankly should have done, should have been done months and months ago. But didn't happen.
Yeah, but the but the but the request on the cease and desist, your specific request for enforcement was to cease and cease. Construction immediately cease and desist construction at the property. And and that and it set forth all sorts of things, saying that it wasn't exercised.
Let me ask the board. Okay, let me ask the board. How did the board individually? Feel about upholding the the third appeal, cease and desist all construction?
I think that's overreaching.
Okay. Anyone else want to chime in on the board from the board?
What keeps going through my mind is if, as attorney Delisi said, that they're gonna, they're going to, it's pretty much agreed that they're going to come in for a permit on the bump out. And at that time, they'd consider. Requesting a special permit for all the other changes. Does that mean that they're admitting that they're doing work right now, unpermitted work?
Well.
If you're asking me that question, right now, we have a building permit to do the work. That's permitted to us. And that that issue. Bob made a call. In July of twenty twenty and said. The permit I issued didn't permit you to do what I permitted you to do. And we appealed that. And so that's what's that's one of the appeals, one of the three appeals that's before this board. And so. That's probably the best way I can answer your question, Lee.
But it, yeah, it, I mean, it is a question, but it's also something that, you know, this has all been tossed around about small changes, not changes, doing another special permit. So I'm just saying if. If it's already being considered to do another special permit with all these other things, then some of this work. Is knowingly being is unpermitted. I and they think we're dancing around some of this, but that's just my comments from listening. To everything for the last two hearings and reading my big pile of stuff and all my emails and all the other stuff that I have, so.
Thank you, Lee. It is. Is, I guess. You make a point, which is, are these are these changes minor? Is the dormer a minor change? Is the enclosure of the porch a minor change? Right? And so. That's something, you know, that I think that I've addressed by saying that the board is constrained. By by SJC law in determining what's considered to be an alteration. That extends or intensifies a nonconformity. And I've I've read to you that dormers by law are not. And that enclosures of porches by law are not. And so. That's one of the reasons why I think I need to talk to the owner of the property. And and kind of reconnoiter about like, how are we going to tackle this issue now? If the board, if the board was to give me a consensus that. That they that it sees no reason to deviate from SJC law in that regard, then there might be no reason to do that. But so that's. I address that.
That's all also would probably end up being a matter of interpretation. How much time do we have to? After we. Close a hearing to to deliberate. We can't deliberate until we close a hearing, correct? Cindy, is that right? Cindy.
She's muted.
You're still muted. Okay, go.
You should close the hearing before you deliberate because. Got all the information.
But my point is, after we close the hearing on an appeal, how much time do we have? To deliberate and then render a decision?
I'll just check on that one for you and get back to on that.
Okay.
I believe it's fourteen days.
How many?
You have two weeks once you vote.
Two weeks.
Once, once we vote.
Yeah, once you vote, you have to friend file a decision in fourteen days.
But that's not the question.
Yeah, so we can close the hearing on on day ten. How much time do we have to before we have to vote, render a decision?
Well, there if you close it, this is a hundred day. We have an extension. We have. We have an extension letter on this. I know you're not asking that, Woody, but there's two.
No, that's you're talking about a hearing. I'm talking about after the hearing is closed.
Well.
Peel.
I believe peels have a hundred day clock, so you'd have to add that in. We'd need to confirm that with Cindy, but. My point is that. I'd have to count up where we are on the hundred day clock.
That makes sense.
And I I don't have that right now. I I can get that, but I just. You know, we have one more hour of Zoom time, so.
Yeah, no, I'm inclined to. I don't want to get into the kind of, I think, in special permits, you have have two weeks, don't you, after you deliberate and vote?
You do. You have two.
But that's after you vote, and we won't have voted here. So the question, the question is, the hundred days, when did the hundred days start?
The hundred days started when they filed the decision, the extension that we have, just so you know, goes to the end of December.
And would that extension include, could we close?
It does say, yes.
Deliberating either now or next month. And not be under a two week timetable to. Vote, render a decision and file it.
I'll read you what the last.
There's a lot of deliberation here for the board to have and do. It's. Not like a special permit. Where, you know, it can be kind of quick. Nobody can.
So the letter, the letters say that that the. Further our agreement to extend the time period with which the zoning board of appeals has to take final action on both appeals. To December thirty first. That's from. Miss Mike, from Mr. Curtis.
Appeals, though.
That those were two, and then I have one from Jeff that states the same.
Okay.
It says. And further confirm our agreement to extend the timeframe with which the board of appeals has to take final action to December thirty first, twenty twenty. And that final action is the filing of the decision.
So let me ask the board. I I'm I have the opinion that I'd like to have more time to deliberate without running afoul of our final filing. We have a lot of material in front of us. There may be other submissions that, of course, if we close the hearing, that's another matter. We can't accept.
I I I why wouldn't we continue offering hearings but to a date closer? The next month. So that so that we could get to a conclusion. I mean, it's just a suggestion. I'm. I'm just saying that we added.
You're saying. Set a special a time for a special meeting, close the hearing at that point. Is that what you're saying?
Well, because you've received additional information today, you have to consider. You have.
I haven't even seen it.
Haven't seen it. And so I don't think it's wise to close for that reason. I understand the cease and desist order. But also I would go to our counsel on that, but I would just say that I would keep the meetings. Open and then set a date that's earlier than December first. Because I know there's a lot of people, a lot of information still to be seen and. And I even attorney. Maxwell Pot hasn't seen it as well, but came in and so. But I think we had talked about possibly with chairman, I were talking about it made sense to maybe add another special meetings like we did for the twenty second instead of waiting. Because that's twenty one days away, December first.
Then we could close the. Close the hearing and start our deliberations and continue to deliberate when we meet in December first.
But if you close it, you can't take additional information.
Oh, that's what I'm I know. Go ahead, Cindy.
I still say, I don't. I don't think you want to close the hearings from what I've heard and from what. I've not really had a chance to really see, but we've sort of. Been told about. There's a lot of new information that I think. Is relevant to all sorts of determinations and deliberations the board would want to have, that I don't think there's an advantage to. Not looking at it. I also think you can handle. Each appeal. Independently. If you feel you want to move forward on one, you can. If you feel you don't have enough information to move forward on any of them right now, don't. But you don't have to take all of this one lump.
So Cindy, I I would agree that. You know, certainly. We're owed more information and look forward to seeing it. I guess I would also acknowledge. That Mr. Stasco has been, you know. And I'm empathetic to the point that he's been, you know, in in regular communication with Bob. I think, you know, I understand that point. But I guess I would just raise the question of. You know, based on what we were presented tonight. I don't think there's much doubt in that, like, something's not right with what was approved versus what's being built. So. You know, do we? You know, is it appropriate to say, you know, timeout? We need to make sure that what's being built. You know, is in line with what is approved and therefore. You know, I guess I would ask you, like, is there any? Reason why we shouldn't or couldn't separate the cease and desist portion of it? And there may not be support from the board on that, but.
It is some respects, that's what I was getting at. I don't. Know of any reason why you cannot do that. Whether or not you should or not is really. A factual determinant that's up to the board based on. What they've heard and how how they feel about whether, wait a minute here, we got to stop everything because there's risk here and we we know enough to know. Something's not right, or whether you feel that you don't have enough information to comfortably do more than start the bump out. That's really. A factual decision for the board to make. And I think they could make that decision independently of anything else.
And and just to add to the conversation, if. If the board is looking because of. Holidays and so forth for additional time. We're certainly, if 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 it was requested, we would, I'm sure, have no problem granting that.
All right. I mean, I know that we seem to be sort of stuck in the mire here. Personally, I think. All construction cease and desist seems to me, I agree with David, is a. Is is a is a bit of an overreach, overkill. If it were my money, I wouldn't be continuing, but it's not my money. I would, because I cannot for the life of me tell you how we would rule on the rest of it. Since we have not discussed it amongst ourselves. But I I don't know. I I think the. I would. I would be inclined to. Deny that. Appeal only because there's so much more in front of us. I I think there are there are bigger. Bigger issues than just a cease and desist on construction. I think it's. You know, is is is. Has some of that building been unpermitted and and not legal or not? I mean, I think that's a bigger issue. My. I don't know.
Woody. Woody, why wouldn't? Why wouldn't we try to have an interim meeting? That is solely. Um that is solely uh once again uh dealing with this. We have a bunch of other things to do tonight. Um I I think an interim meeting is warranted. I mean, you know, I I can see how. One could look at many of the things that were um that were agreed to by the building inspector and say each individually might be minor. I'm not as sure about the roof line as I am about some of the others, but there is the sum total sort of thing. Uh and I think it would be very useful to require the building inspector to be at the next meeting. Um so that we could get some of his thoughts about what's minor and what's not uh as well. And if we have a meeting that just deals with this, we won't have the pressure of an agenda uh backed up behind us and, you know, the end of Zoom. Um. Uh let's, let's try. Now, we do have thanks, we do have Thanksgiving to worry about, uh and then our next meeting is the first, so it's as early as it can be. We almost have to do it. Next week, and I don't know what the advertisement process requires.
And we have two week, two week advertising?
I don't have to advertise anything. We're continuing.
Oh, continue. Okay. All right. Well, I would agree with with Peter because that would allow us on the first of December, um assuming that we've taken care of some other business. Some flex time for further deliberation on this, and I would all would, you know. And either our special meeting, we we then close it, or the meeting following, but I would like to get at the deliberation phase. Um as opposed to just looking at at new plans or or crosshatching. I mean, I think we've gotten a lot, a lot of that already.
So could we look at either the seventeenth or the nineteenth? Seventeenth is a Tuesday, nineteenth is a Thursday.
I'm okay.
Uh. The seventeenth works well for me.
How about other people?
I'm getting there.
Either one's good for me.
I can't do the nineteenth. I have another board meeting that night.
Okay, other. Matt?
The seventeenth is a Tuesday, correct?
Yeah.
Tuesday, Tuesday week.
Yeah, it looks like I'm I'm good.
Okay.
What about Jeff? Can you do it? Delisi and everybody?
Yeah.
Joe?
I can do it, yeah.
I'm available then.
Okay. John, Kevin Arrow?
Oh, he's got some.
John, you're muted, you're muted, John.
Tell.
I'm sorry, I I can't Tuesday, but that don't, it's not on me.
Okay, well, I think we have the most of the players. I mean, I think we're gonna have to, you know, the key things.
About Charlie.
Charlie? You're muted. I can't hear you. You.
Yes, he can do it.
Yes. All right, well, let's do it. All right.
All right. Um I'm just gonna, we do have a couple of members of the public. Um I should just read aloud and um so um. Ginge Jennifer Smith, uh who lives on Stonely Road is looks two houses away and watched the old house be completely demolished, followed by the construction of the news new house. That is twice as large. Is it correct the project was approved as an addition? This doesn't make sense to me. So I think that she's probably heard a lot of the testimony to answer that. And then Douglas McGregor. Um who I do need is addressed if he could type that in. Um asked if the board clarify for the audience, if it is proven the project is in violation, can the board? Comment on their ability to enforce demolition of a nonconforming components and components, I'm sorry, and clarify their willingness to do so if given irrefutable evidence. A violation. Secondly, will the owner voluntarily stop work in good faith in light of the confusion and lack of productive documentation provided at this meeting? He lives at Seven Border Street. Um. So that's just for the the record.
River Street.
Right. So I read those into the record. I don't know whether it just makes sense to continue um to Tuesday where other things will be addressed.
I didn't call you the last comment. What you you don't know if it makes sense to continue?
No, no. Do you want to just, I mean, do you want to respond to that? I think that's something that would be responded to at a later date, just.
Yes, yes.
But that's up to the board, obviously.
Yeah, let's not take down on that one tonight.
Can I just um as far as Mr. Carbonaro is concerned, I it would be helpful if he would be avail, if if we could find a day when he was available without pushing this off too far. I understand we're dealing with a lot of people, and so it might be difficult. But I just wanted to raise that issue um since he is our engineering expert and can speak to matters regarding. Engineering much more articulately than I can.
How about anybody from your office, John? Carmen?
Yeah, it's 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 a big ask, I think, to move everybody else around for me. Um we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Okay, good. All right, so we're gonna meet on the seventeenth.
Yes.
All right, seven thirty here. Okay. So I make a motion to that effect that we have.
Could, would you mind, Woody, moving each um one individually to continue it so that we can, we're gonna keep them all separate to continue to that night?
Okay, I I make a motion to move the appeal uh filed by um. The Windham's and their attorneys to uh against the raising and reconstruction of the house. Appealing the building inspector's issuance of a building permit. Uh I move that we continue that until the seventeenth. All in favor?
Hey.
Hi, Woody Chittick?
Hi, Lee Darst.
Okay, get your names out there.
I'm Matt Watkins.
Okay.
Dave McMorrissey.
Okay, I I also, I think that's it. We have a unanimous vote, so I would make a motion to um. Uh continue the appeal filed by attorney Jeffrey Delisi and his client Ryan Stasko requesting um that this board confirm the issuance of a building permit. So we'll continue that to the seventeenth as well, that appeal. All in favor? Woody Chittick? Aye?
We need a second, sorry.
What?
Second.
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 Oh, sorry, second, okay.
Yeah.
Woody Chittick, aye?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Yeah, speak up so we can move it along.
Peter Gerda guy.
Dave McMorrissey.
Don't be shy. Okay, um and thirdly, um I make a motion to continue the appeal. Again, fine, uh filed by the on behalf of the Windham's. Uh appealing the building inspector's failure to issue an enforcement of uh order and um. The appellants are requesting that all construction cease and desist. Uh make a motion to continue that uh hearing as well until the seventeenth. Be the second? Second, somebody?
I second.
Okay, Lee seconds. Woody Chittick, aye?
Lee Darst, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
All right.
Peter Gerda guy.
Okay. So submissions may come in between, but nothing, please, not on the on the night of the hearing. It's it's useless. Get stuff like that and and be able to consider it. Okay, we have two other um other matters before us, one of which is a hearing on sixty two Rust Way special permit. To extend the nonconforming structure um into the setback, and I'd like to um just just dispense with with one other continued hearing. If we may, uh first, and that has to do with one twenty four and eighty seven Elm Street. The the applicants, uh. Adam Brodsky on behalf of the CHI Elm Street Realty have requested a continuance to December first. Um I hope Adam hasn't been sitting. Uh waiting for us to finish, but at any rate, um we have a letter to that effect, so I'd make a motion to accept the request of the applicants to continue that hearing until December first. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Lee Darst, aye.
Okay, Woody Chittick, aye?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Peter Gerda guy.
And Charlie, are you nodding your head? Yeah, Charlie nods his head. Okay, so let's, let's move to sixty two Rust Way. Um.
Woody, I'd like a three minute break.
Oh, yeah, okay. Uh John, are you gonna be, uh your client's gonna be here or just you presenting on that?
Uh my clients are here. I'm not sure if you'd like to elevate them, Tom and Eileen Norton. It's.
Really, I think it should be your shot to call.
Yeah, they're. Why don't we elevate them?
Hey, I just did.
Thank you.
And um oh, that's another one. Oh, it's Alan. There we go. I'll be back in a second.
Okay.
Take the minute.
Who's the timekeeper for the three minute break? Charlie, is your, is your um sound just off, not working? I'm just curious. I guess it's. Not working. Dave, I didn't hear too much from you on this one, on this last one, but I guess my concern is that it it that it is, you know, going on and on and on and.
Yeah, I mean. He's doing things at his peril. I mean, I I don't have any problem with him weatherproofing, you know, getting things weather tight.
Yeah.
Um including the bump up. There's no reason to destroy parts of the house while that gets decided. But, you know, I I think it would be wise if you didn't go beyond getting things weather tight that are in question.
Right, but I mean, in the final analysis, it's his nickel, isn't it?
Yep.
I think if we can kind of come to a resolution, I I don't know what was submitted today. I didn't, apparently there there was material out at six thirty, but I wasn't.
I took a quick glance at it. It didn't seem to be anything compelling.
As long as we can get copies of of what was presented tonight, you know, in a clear and. Way, I think we can um cover a lot of ground, which we didn't tonight.
Mm hmm.
Maybe that's my fault, I'm sure. My fault. So we're on a, we're on a uh the Nortons, we're on a uh probably about a minute and a half left, about three minute break or 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 less than that.
I'm back.
Okay, so we have a full, wait a minute, no, Lee is still gone and Jen is gone and Cindy Yamara is gone. So I I see that we have as a in our audience um uh steals and um. I think the way to handle that one is to um continue the hearing until December first and make an assignment before we break tonight in terms of getting a draft decision. Um on that, rather than have her sit here or him. For another half hour. How's the board feel?
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd I'd make them, well, I don't know if I ought to wait for Jen, who's, I guess I have to.
Yep.
Does anybody, um is anybody gonna volunteer to draft a decision on the River Road? I don't know who's who's due up for a decision. Oh, is that me? Did I get it? Get that assignment?
Which one?
Uh River Road?
River Road.
We haven't assigned it.
You haven't assigned it, okay.
No.
Let's make an assignment right now, and then we can get Rust Way out of the way, but let the steals go home.
Okay. So who wants to write River Road?
Well, you know, this is gonna be an interesting one in the sense that I'm not quite as convinced that we were. Uh, you know, that that the uh the one with the breeze way was decided solely on. The idea that it was connected. Um and then how tenuous a connection is a connection. Um. Uh but i- 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 in in my judgment, you know, you've got a a neighborhood that's very dispersed, you know, in terms of not having any um. Any substantial adverse. Impact, I think that's easy. The question is how connected is connected?
So are you gonna write it or is it?
I'm I'm saying, I guess if I did, if I were gonna write it, I might write write it two ways to do.
Yeah, I I really think so because the issue is not so much is this, is this uh, if you will, harmful to the to the neighbors.
Right.
Um it's, it has to do with precedent. No, we don't have.
Yeah, is it, is it a variance because of the tenuous connection?
Yeah, is it really part of it, part of the structure, or is it a sham connector?
Yeah, and I and I feel a little less confident uh on when we get into variance territory than some of you legal beagles.
I'm more comfortable with a variance. I I just think that um. Yeah, it is a close call, but I how do other people think?
Um well, I just want to say that it's still open. We just need to sign a.
I know, that's the problem.
Let's sign. All right, we can come back to this after the the nice people here go home. Um. If if they wish to, they can stay around, but anyway, um why don't you think about who wants to volunteer on River Road? I mean, I don't care. I'll do it. Okay, so go ahead, John. You're you've you're you're up.
Thank you very much. Um. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Mm hmm. I I just pulled the plan up. I will try to be as quick as possible. I know we're on a clock here this evening. It's been a long night. Um. I'm gonna walk through the site plan and then the architectural plans. Um the architect couldn't make it this evening, so I will. Uh do my best to walk through those plans and get into some of the facade calculations. Sixty two Rust Way. Uh Tom and Eileen Norton are here this evening with me. The owners of sixty two Rust Way sits at the bottom of the cul-de-sac at the end of Rust Way. It is a nonconforming lot uh due to area and as well as setback, as you can see, to the rear yard. We've identified Rust Way as the front yard. I've identified the most distant and parallel based on the orientation of the house. Uh the rear line being the line that's behind the house and then two sidelines on the right side and one sideline on the left side. So uh right now, the house sits, it's a single family dwelling with an attached two car garage uh that faces. Uh towards uh the driveway, which is in this uh beige area, this this gray shaded area that is an existing paved driveway. And what the Nortons would like to do is to put an addition on their house and essentially relocate the garage, the attached garage, further away from the main dwelling. And fill it in with living space, uh attach that with a deck, a covered porch, and rebuild sort of the front entry to the house. This this proposed uh addition is primarily atop the existing paved surface. Um the driveway will be slightly relocated to align with the new two overhead doors. Um the proposal is to not get any closer than what exists today, which is about six and a half feet, a little under seven feet. To the rear yard, we're proposing to get from um as close as six point nine feet. The existing dwelling is six point seven feet, as you can see on the site plan. Just to quickly walk through the the numbers here, as I mentioned, the lot area is uh insufficient by about ten thousand square feet. About a twenty five thousand square foot lot. We have more than enough frontage. We have more than enough lot width, both existing and proposed. Our lot coverage is going up slightly, uh not as much as you would think, mainly because we're building atop an existing paved driveway. So that's going up about a percentage and a half to twenty three percent, where thirty percent is allowed for total lot coverage. The building coverage is going from ten and a half percent up to sixteen point four percent, where twenty percent is allowed. Uh we're well under the building height. Um our highest point is measured to the top of railing of a widow's walk, which I'll get into. Uh we're conforming in all respects with respect to all the other sidelines and front lines in terms of setback. The only setback not conformity is going to be maintained along this rear lot line. So the house is on sewer. Um, this project is of the size that we would be triggering um, a large home review due to gross floor area with the planning board and likely a, a stormwater permit, although we'll be close in the fact that we're not increasing impervious tremendously, but the total area will likely trigger a stormwater permit. But this is our first stop, the zoning board of appeals. Um, due to the fact that we don't have the by right ability to just proceed with this project, so we wanted to make sure that we could, um, move forward with a special permit. Uh, as we believe that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, which is the test under section 87B, which is what we're applying under. The architecture for the project is, um, as I mentioned, we're, we're going with, on the first floor, you have the existing garage that's at grade. That's getting relocated to the left with the, with the two-car garage being pushed over, uh, filling in with a mudroom and repurposing the existing garage space, uh, with additional living area on the first floor. Second floor, there'll be a master bedroom, playroom on, on the second floor, uh, with some additional laundry facilities and a master bath. As far as non-conformities go with respect to facade, because I know that's always a big, uh, talking point with respect to special permits, we went ahead and did some calculations regarding facade within the rear yard setback to compare both existing, uh, with the proposed. And so the existing rear yard, rear elevation, this is the directly behind the house and as the building takes sort of a dogleg left, actually the lot does, this, this, the, the building, the existing building is fairly straight, but the lot itself doglegs, so the, the setback takes a turn, so you can see the uh, odd orientation of the, of the facade calculations. But we've got about 1,900 square feet within the rear yard for facade. That is, uh, going up to about a little under 3,200 square feet total. Um, with the addition of the new attached garage and connected living space. So that in itself is about a 68% increase in facade in the, in the rear yard. Uh, as I mentioned, the height is well below the, the allowable. Um, I wanna blow this up a little bit just to get a little closer to the, if you guys can see that okay. Um, we're measuring, we've taken an average grade around the entire perimeter of the building. The pre-construction grade, we come up with a, an average grade of 73 feet. And, uh, the high point of the main roof is at 98.9, about 99, so we're at 26 feet. And then, uh, we go up to just under 30 feet to the top of the railing on the widow's walk. Going back to the site plan, um, and well, I'm happy to, to switch back and forth, and I, I do apologize for being a little quick here, but I know it's late. Um, I, we did include a narrative to go through each of the uh, items for the special permit test, that it shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. Uh, we get into the details of the proposed facade calculations, comparing it to the existing. Uh, the fact that we're not getting any closer to the rear yard with respect to dimensions. And then, um, we also point out that we're not increasing traffic or doing anything substantially different than what exists today, uh, as it relates to intensity of the use or uh, suggesting any more hazards, hazardous use to the neighborhood. We were asked to provide some additional, uh, information, which we did with respect to areas, uh, existing house footprint, which is at, uh, about 2,426 square feet. The proposed addition footprint is about 1,100 square feet. Uh, the existing house footprint in the setback, so this area in here is about 720 feet, square feet, and the proposed addition is about 990 square feet within the rear yard setback. Um, we did show the neighbors on either side. The question was posed, why didn't we show other neighbors? And it was simply because they were a little too distant with respect to the, the page orientation. Um, this neighbor on Linden Drive is about 150 feet away, so they, they were just outside the viewport of our drawing. It wasn't intentional. We can certainly add that. Um, and then the, the Roy property at 438 Jerusalem, they would be off, off the map as well. They're about 250 feet away. Question was whether or not we'd have a, a full foundation, um, under this, and it will be a crawl space. Uh, under the proposed addition, there's a lot of lead shell and bedrock materials here. There is no attic, uh, for future use. The attic height is less than four feet from the bottom of the ridge to the top of the ceiling joists. This is, uh, directly from the architect. Lastly, uh, the question about RGFA, the residential gross floor area, um, pertaining to whether or not this would trigger a large home review under the planning board regs. The total gross floor area of the house, existing and proposed, is 4,924 square feet, not including the garage of the lower house. Uh, level where, whose ceiling is below five feet, so that wouldn't be included in RGFA. Um, existing gross floor area with no garage is about 2,900 square feet. The proposed is about 2,000 square feet, which gets us up to the 4,900 square feet. Um, so that in itself would trigger, uh, we're above the 3,500 square feet for the threshold of large home review. So I am going to stop it there and happy to answer any questions. And again, I'm sorry for the speedy delivery here.
No, I think. Go ahead, Peter.
Uh, Jo- John, I, I, I may know the answer and it may be better addressed to the architect than to you, but, um, I, I'm sort of compelled to ask, there, you got quite a bit of space on this lot that would be conforming to the right of the house as we're looking at this. Yet you've chosen to do the addition, uh, almost exclusively in the setback. Um, why?
Yeah, and I may turn to Eileen and Tom a little bit on this.
Somebody's got, got some noise.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's a headphone, I guess it worked.
I do.
I don't know.
Yeah, hi everyone. Good evening. Um, I think ju- just to answer that question, um, you know, based on, um, the layout of our house right now, the right side of our house is, there's basically a bedroom there. Um, so the, from just a layout perspective on our house, it would require, um, quite a bit more investment to change the, the layout of our house, right? So first of all, if we were to build an addition on the right side, um, it would really significantly change the overall construction of our house. We'd have to change the whole layout because the right side of our house is a bedroom. Um, and then also the right side of, right side of our house is full of ledge. Um, so just from an invest, you know, from a cost perspective, it would be, uh, probably cost prohibitive for us to try to um, change the whole layout of our entire house, plus, plus try to, um, build in all of that ledge and do that construction on the right side. It would really, it would really significantly change the whole, I think, property and also just the look. Um, if you've come up Rustway before, um, where our driveway currently exists, it's kind of like to the left of the, the, um, the, yeah, it's basically hidden when you come to the, come up the driveway there. Um, so it would just change the whole look, I think, of the whole, um, the neighborhood, right? So because you'd be coming up the street looking at our garage. Um, so from, I, I would think that our neighbors, I don't know for sure, but I, I think they'd have probably a problem with that if that's what they were facing coming up the street, because that's what everyone would be staring at. Yeah, it would be higher.
Hey, you know what gives me concern is that, and I, I was trying to think about analogous situations. Um, the, uh, amount of just sheer footprint for, you know, massing and, and is, is quite another matter. It's just, but just from a sheer footprint standpoint, you're, you're, um, increasing the, uh, amount of house in the setback by 1.4 times, um, more. You're more than doubling. This, uh, as Peter pointed out, it's, it's almost entirely in the setback. And I was trying to think if there, what's analogous situations if we run into where there's A, there's, you know, construction entirely in the setback that's uh, more than doubling, you know, uh, doubling than the non-conformity. And secondly, yeah, I know you've got ledge off to the right, but the topography is such that there's only a foot or two um, deviation and the proposed, uh, basement is not really a basement, it's a crawl space. So it isn't like you need, uh, you know, to go down six or seven feet deep. Um, I don't know, I'd ask the board, uh, can you think of analogous situations where we've had an addition that is essentially entirely in a setback? Um, uh, added onto a house that is, um, less than half of which is in the setback?
I think the, uh, former Leiden House down on Atlantic Avenue would be the closest I remember, and we did turn that one down for those reasons. Um, that one was going back and there wasn't much room in the rear. Uh, and, um, it was the difference, I would say, is that there was a house back there and here the Roy's are a very long way away.
Right.
So, uh, I wouldn't make it an exact parallel. I think the physical on the ground, uh, issues are the same, but the neighborhood's different.
Yeah, it comes pretty close to this Hartwell House, so they have a shed at the back of their um, driveway. Um, but be that as it may, um, you know, the existing house is roughly, uh, two-thirds, um, outside the setback, conforming in other words, and one-third in the setback. And now we've got an addition that's for all intents and purposes entirely in the setback and it's, um,
Yeah. When it really, when it really doesn't have to be.
Yeah, it is changing. A house that's two-thirds in the setback is now um, uh, only a half or, or less than half in the setback. I, I know, I, I had it backwards. Um, that, I could, you know, a house that's, uh, two-thirds conforming, um, you know, is radically altered. Uh, I don't know, and, and I, I kept looking off to the right there, and I know there is that rock, uh, the, you know, labeled exposed ledge.
That's not a, rock is not a zoning issue.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. But, um, I'm saying, I, I don't see that as, as quite the, the impediment, uh, perhaps, and nor do I think that just because there's an existing bedroom there and it'd be inconvenient. Um, I wish there was, there ought to be some way to, to lessen the uh, increase in the non, in the, in the setback because, um, setbacks are there for a reason.
Yeah. I, I know, John, I'm sure you can probably add more to this. I mean, I would just say, I mean, I don't know if any of you have, um, come up Rustway and looked at the house at all, but, I mean, I, I would be very concerned, I guess, from, from our perspective about getting neighborhood approval, um, around building on the right side of our house. I mean, I, I do think that, um, I know myself, if, if this was someone else's house that, that we're living here and I lived in this cul-de-sac, I would have a problem with building.
Yeah, but you know, you don't need their approval. If, if, if you're building outside the setback, you don't need their, their approval at all. You can do that as a matter of right.
Yeah, I know, I wouldn't want to cause a problem though. Like, I mean, the reality is like, we all have good neighbors here and I think that just from a neighborhood perspective, we'd want to keep the look of the neighborhood. Like where our, where our garage is now and where we're intending to, um, to push out the house. It's literally like, you almost can't see it unless you kind of come around the circle, and we've had conversations with the Hartwells, um, who we're quite friendly with, um, here, and, you know, they didn't have a problem with it. Uh, the other neighbors, um, their house is actually for sale right now and there's renters there. Um, so I guess from our perspective, we felt like we were, would be, um, you know, not creating too much, um, issue, if you will, with the neighborhood and look and feel of the existing homes in the neighborhood, um, as far as where we're, we would be looking to expand. Um, but if we did look at building on the left side of our house, one, I think it would just cost us much more. It would be cost prohibitive for us to try to go, I think, on that side of our house and really redo the whole part of our house that's actually fairly new. So our house was actually developed when we bought it, um, a couple of years ago. It's all fairly new. Um, they, they redeveloped it at the time, so for us to actually have to go in and completely do new construction for the house that was actually, you know, already just done, um, we just invested all this money in our home, so I'm not sure we would want to do something like that, right? I mean, I understand what you're saying, um, because there's some land there, but I just feel like if we had to do that, I don't think we'd be able to, you know, spend that money to, to do something like that, to reconstruct the whole house. Yeah.
Matt, what do you think? What are your points?
And I, I agree with, um, most of what's been raised. Um, John, I know you mentioned, you know, that this could trigger stormwater. Do you see any of the drainage issues being, you know, ones that would, you know, or, or, you know, trigger, I guess mitigation measures and would they be, um, acceptable enough that they would contain that, you know, drainage patterns with any of the neighboring properties?
I, I don't think.
John, you're not coming through. Uh, I can't hear you.
Maybe try shutting off your video.
No, you're not better. You've got laryngitis, John. I think we wore him out on the previous hearing.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? No. No, no, all right, all right. Let, let, um, dial in.
That's not working.
He's gonna dial in.
Gonna dial in, call?
Yeah.
Dial in. John, um, do you have that?
The number?
Yeah, yeah.
All done. All right, um, it's six, four, 1-646 558 8658, 56.
646655.
Just shut down your computer audio or you'll be feeding back.
Yeah. So it's on 1-646 558 8656.
So the one thing to be aware to, um, just to add to what I was just saying to, just, um, our house is a split level. Um, so it's not actually like a traditional walk-in, like a colonial, right? So, um, because of our house being a split level, when you walk in the front door, you walk down a few steps to the basement level, or you walk up a few steps to another level. So, um, the idea around doing a, an addition to the right side of our house, if you can kind of follow that, um, the pattern of our house being a split level and, and the split level happens on the right side of our house when you walk in our front door, you would literally have to, again, like, change or redesign that whole addition, that, like, the part of our house that exists today because it's a split level. Uh, it wouldn't be on the first level, level of our house where you would actually walk in, right? And that's what we're trying to actually, we're trying to address right now, all of our living space, our normal living space is in our kitchen. Um, we have our family room and, and kitchen all kind of connected. It's just one big room that we kind of live in. And the other rooms in our house are either upstairs to bedrooms or downstairs to a basement laundry room. Um, that's, and so that's why we're looking at kind of expanding out through the garage side of, side of our house right now and having more of a living room and a first-floor bathroom. We don't even have a first-floor bathroom today. Um, that's downstairs or you go upstairs, and so we're trying to just have more living space in the first floor. Um, so that's just a little bit more, if you haven't seen the inside design of our house, it's, it's a little bit more complex because of the layout to the right side of our house because everything's on that split level. It's all on, there's all stairs and just rooms on the right side of the house.
I think looking at the plans, it makes perfect sense why you want to do what you want to do. You know, from a standpoint of the layout of the house and how the house would flow the way you have it designed. It's just the problem is it's on the setback.
Where are you, Lee, in this or Charlie? Charlie may still be muted. Charlie, you muted still?
Am I? I'm not sure. Played with things. Did you hear me?
You're good.
Yeah, for the first time. All right.
John, I said.
We can't, we can't see very well. We can't see very well.
Very large increase in the structure in the setback zone. However, if you look at the, at the area, I agree with Eileen, the, if you're going to put a garage anywhere, where they're putting it is a logical place to put it. And I don't see that it's detrimental to either of the direct neighbors on the northwest or, or the Roys who almost, you can't see their house from where this garage would be.
So I have, John, do you want to try talking? All right.
Nope. Oh, he's muted.
Yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, you're good now.
Sorry about that, my apologies. So I'm muted, but you.
I can hear you.
No, you're good.
Yeah, it's a little echo, but it's okay.
Okay, is this better?
Sure.
Just to quickly address Matt's comment about drainage.
Oh, that's not good.
Okay.
Got you now, I think.
Let me shut, let me shut the video off. See, that's less of a nightmare here, I apologize. I don't see any issues with the drainage that we couldn't mitigate. I, I think getting back to the lot itself, that's really where we're challenged in terms of doing anything on the other side, as Eileen and Tom indicated. It's really just flipping the entire house, which is just not practical. The house has been there since 59, which is why it's sited where it is. It's, you know, tucked in this left side, in the narrowest portion of the lot, where, you know, unfortunately it creates this non-conformity with the rear yard. But to really redo this and have a wholesale change of what this existing footprint and how the house is laid out is really a hardship. I know we're not talking about variance here, but we're not getting any closer to the rear yard. And in terms of overall impact of impervious and impact to the neighbors, just felt like this is a reasonable way to proceed with what they want to try to achieve with this project.
John, John, the, the grade that runs up to the Roys, runs to the Roys, does that continue to go uphill?
So it, they have a high point in their backyard and then it slopes. It's fairly level back there, but it does slope away towards the Roys. And then it all slopes further to the right as you're looking out to the back of the house.
Slopes up or slopes down?
It actually does both, but it slopes down too. I mean, it's an undulating grade back there.
Okay.
What about you, Lee? You're muted. No questions. Charlie, you think this makes sense and doesn't bother anybody? And I don't know quite where you are, Dave.
I think they benefit from the uniqueness of the neighborhood.
I mean. Do we need any more information? We're not deliberating here.
No, but I think we should by next meeting have a decision.
That's fine. Do we need any more information? I think John did a pretty darn good job of anticipating most of the calculations we would normally ask for.
Have we, have we heard anything from, do we have any input from any of the neighbors?
Jen? We have not submitted any.
I don't have anything.
Try. Eileen and Tom, do you want to?
Yeah, we met with, we can speak specifically about the Hartwells. We met with them to go over the plans. And, you know, they felt like the view that they're going to have of our garage is the same of what we have with their house. That's specifically what Jeff had said. And so they didn't have any issues with it. So I don't want to speak for them, but that's what they communicated to us, that they felt like our view of what we see when we look at their house, which is their garage, they'd be looking at the same thing. So they didn't have a problem with it. And then the Carlisle's have moved out of their house. But the conversations we've had with them, they felt like, you know, they were, they were, you know, happy with whatever improvements we were doing to our house. And that was their communication to us. We haven't talked to them recently about that. But again, where we're planning to do the work is away from their house and not something that would be impacting them.
Who haven't we heard from? Peter, you had a, you, I share your concern about why so much in the setback, I mean, but.
Well, I, as I said, I don't think we should be debating, deliberating this now. We, I think we have enough information. I for one want to go and look at it, which I haven't been able to do, but I will be able to do between now and any next meeting. I know that, I know it generally, but I want to look at it specifically. And I think John gave us, he read our minds in terms of what we normally ask. Of course, he's here, he's heard it enough.
Done this before.
He's done this before.
Do you want to do the decision, a draft decision?
Me?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll do a draft if you want on this one.
Are they, are they cutting us off?
No, that John is dialing in. I said, I texted him the.
You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak. This meeting is being recorded.
I'm back.
You're good now.
Wow. It's been a long night.
Yeah.
By the way, I had no idea that you guys do this at nighttime. I had no idea. I thought this all happened during the day. So the fact that you guys do this so late at night on a Thursday.
Well.
Many of them have day jobs.
Yeah.
Charlie and I don't.
Yeah. Is there anything that we can submit that would provide any more credence to the proposal? You know, it's obvious that we're seeking relief that's substantial on that side of the lot. But this is really the project that Tom and Eileen so desire to pursue. So if, if, we'd like to just put something together that's to the best of our ability. But, you know, we certainly don't want to go down the wrong path here and not be able to ask for anything different down the road, so.
Got it. But, well, Peter, why don't you make your site visit? The rest of us, I believe, have all been up there, I hope.
Yes.
Right? Yeah.
I mean, we are, as always, looking at the impact on the neighborhood, not.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just unusual, so much. But anyway, that's not a murder case. Okay.
What we can do is continue to have discussions with the neighbors. Were we talking about continuing this to the first?
Yes. As we always do, because we need a, you know, if nothing else, a draft decision to deliberate on.
One thing, John, when you do your, talk to the neighbors, give us the size of the other neighbors. I think it'll show that the proposed house is roughly the same size as the other ones in the direct neighborhood.
We can do that.
Well, that's a good point, Charlie.
I think, I mean, just one, if you, to the left of us, the Carlisle's, their house is at least, I think, 5,000 square feet. And then to their right, their Hartwells, I think is at least, you know, it's over 4,000 square feet for sure. The other homes, I'm not sure, but they're all, I mean, if you look at Rustway at least, I think they're all around, you know, between 3,500 and square feet and over.
Include the Roys when you do it.
If you're comparing, sure.
That's no fair.
I'll confirm the topography too, on that, in that direction.
Yeah, well, the reason I ask is it's, I'm just curious as to, you know, what's really going to be visible from the Roys of the new construction?
Yeah, it's not going to be visible by the Monte Fuscos at all. And, no, that's irrelevant. I would think it'd be the Hartwells of anybody that would be.
And again, we specifically, we're friendly with the Hartwells.
Yeah, no, I know, you told me that, I'm not, I'm not challenging, not.
Oh, I know, I know, I just want you to, I want you to know that we, you know, we definitely don't want to do anything that will impact our neighbors. Like, we're not interested in doing, like, building an enormous McMansion here, right? Like, we're not, that's not what we're trying to do here. We're just trying to, you know, build a first floor bathroom, a first floor living room, and, you know, extend our garage. Like, that's really what we're trying to do.
Right, and the David, and the point Dave McMorris is getting at, I think, is that, given the Roys, wherever, wherever the heck they're set back, I mean, it's, you know, this may be, the lot line is probably, you know, really difficult to eyeball. You don't know where your property ends and where theirs begins because there's nothing back there for quite a ways.
That's right.
You know, it isn't as though you've got, you know, your cheek to jaw with a bunch of other structures. Anyway. So I'm satisfied if we make a, make a motion to continue this hearing for this until December 1st.
Go moved.
And we'll have a draft decision then. Moved and seconded, all in favor, would each of you say a aye?
He dyes it.
Against an aye.
Okay, Lee.
Matt walking side.
Peter, go to the guy.
Dave McMorris, aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Sorry about the technical difficulties.
It's been a night of those.
You rebounded well.
Even, even when the audio and visual were, were good, it's been, we had technical difficulties, so.
Thank you.
Lord.
Good night, thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
A bad night for River.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the board, I mean, do we expect new information coming in on the, on the Stasko property? Or are we beyond what Jen got today? Or are we really going to be that now, sort of going into another phase, which is to look at what's, you know, he said, she said, and what's, what's been submitted and take it from there?
Yeah, I think, I expect that we're trying to digest what's there than anything new.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably QAQC, right, what John helped to provide, just to see if there's any discrepancies in what was presented versus.
Well, it's, you know, what's not really been clear to me is that back in 20, we'll call it 2018, when we finally rendered our decision, we were only dealing with the front of the house. And I don't even know, Jen, what was submitted in terms of building elevations and things of that sort. I think we've probably gotten a little more tight on some of this. But at any rate, there was a plan then, some, some, you know, some Bob Egan's approval of a plan. And I, it's, but what's not clear to me is since that 2019 building permit, what else has changed? I have a feeling that other, there have been other changes over and above, you know, whether or not Bob should have, I don't think he should have approved, given them a building permit in 2019. But regardless, I have an idea there have been changes since then.
I don't think that the 2019 thing was as much as the creep that occurred to the, not so much to the, to the perimeter, but to the overall envelope as the raise and rebuild occurred. I think this sort of got the while is, you know, while you're at it, why don't we tweak, tweak a little here? And it sounds like he, he signed off on it, whether or not each one was individually a minor modification. But collectively, they aren't, or maybe they are, I don't know. But the, the, the one that's hardest to get your hands around is raising the, raising the ridge. Not only made it taller from the standpoint of the neighbors, but it necessarily increased the volume too. So it looks bigger than, than simply taller. You know, adding a foot and a half or whatever it is, also added volume. It, it sounds to me like everybody thinks the bump out, including maybe Ryan, was a bad idea. But the rest of it, it just seems like it was sort of infectious. And we haven't had Bob here for any of this.
He was here last meeting.
I don't remember, okay, I don't remember him talking.
Yeah, yeah, if it was in the minutes, I did.
Okay, good.
Talked much.
I think there's no question that the, that that raised roof, that has nothing to do with the Bjorkland case at all.
I think it's hard to square that with.
It's specific.
But I would just like to mention a couple of things. Meetings being recorded, and we've continued this, so.
Right, okay, good point.
Same with River Road, so I think you need to just.
All right, do we have a volunteer in River Road? Good point. Dave McMorris, all right.
And I'll volunteer, I think I already did.
You already did.
To do Rust. And I will actually probably do two alternatives there because I can see two points of view. And I want to see if I can mimic my colleague David and do a good job on both of them.
Okay.
And I don't know if Cindy had anything to add. I only, before, I know that we've kept her late, but they have all been good, interesting cases. You all, you're muted.
Well, Cindy, you're muted, so we can't hear you.
That might be better at this point, isn't it? I, I think there's an awful lot of information on a lot of matters that has come out tonight. And I think there's a lot of pros and cons to going either way on a couple of them. I think there's certain issues that I think you get a gut reaction to, whether something was properly going on or not. And I think those are all issues for the board to discuss and decide. I mean, you know, I have my opinion of what I think, but it's my opinion on that doesn't really matter. It's what the board feels was done and was consistent or inconsistent with what they approved. That's sort of my view.
I have, I have one question. And Mr. DeLisi indicated it was a matter of law, what are, what are small changes that, and I question whether that's a matter of law. And one includes dormers, well, there are dormers and dormers. I can't imagine, I can't imagine that all dormers are considered minor changes. I question that it's a matter of law. Those were just examples which we have to then make our own determination on.
I would bet that the legal interpretation is exactly that. It was an interpretation by attorney DeLisi that was most beneficial to his client. I would be hard pressed to say that it's black and white with no ability to deviate from that.
Yeah, it also occurs to me that we have a provision in our bylaws about permitted projections that talks about some of these things. And I would guess that in the Bjorkland decision, they were dealing with zoning bylaw that was silent as to a lot of that stuff.
Well, you know, I, I think I'm not too far off that in the Bjorkland case, he proposed an extension as a non-conforming house, and he wanted to extend it. But he wanted to extend it five times longer. And I think the court was trying to say, look, you want to do small things. They turned, they turned him down. They didn't approve his, his, you know, proposal of a five times extension. And, and I think a lot of these examples were used to kind of offset an enormous expansion by saying, look, you can do a dormer, you can do a conversion of a one-car garage. But they never talked about height or volume. a conversion of a one car garage, but they never talked about height or volume.
Well, he never lacked for a hot spot.
No. So I think, I don't know. You can look at the decision. I think it's perhaps a bit more narrow than what Jeff DeLisi would like to suggest.
I can't sit here and disagree with that.
Yeah. I'll already let you know what I think without saying it. So we'll go from there. Yeah, it should be a good discussion, because I mean, it's not a slam dunk.
The process creeped along, and it just kept accumulating.
Yeah. And after a while, it just.
I don't know that it was malicious.
And we did add a meeting once we knew it was filed and the only other I have, I wrote a lot of minutes. So I know you probably didn't have a lot of time. If you want, if people could read them and just make hand comments on them, and then we can vote them next meeting, because we're meeting next week. So I can put them, so I can put them on the agenda, you know.
I've, I've already made hand contact comments.
See, that's what we can, we can have, we can have Peter be the one to.
No.
Ben used to do that.
I gotta, I gotta write a double-barreled opinion by the first of December, so.
All right.
And I don't have David's pen.
I can send you a word version.
Well.
We got a.
Do you like a meeting, a motion to adjourn?
That'd be a nice.
So moved.
Yeah, all in favor? Would you check a guy?
Lee Darcey.
Against an eye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Dave McMorris, aye.
It is a good guy.
All right, have fun, you guys.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you, Jen.
Oh, boy. Everybody have a good night. I'll get you full-size plans.
All right.
Bye.